Well, hello and welcome to this Eureka City Council meeting, Tuesday, November 4th, 2025. I hope you all voted. There's still time. You can vote till 8:30 this evening. If you haven't voted yet, get on out there and cast your vote. Your voice is important. So with that, I will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerujiji. Past actions by local, state, federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. And if we could get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Here.
And Mayor Burgel?
Here. And would all who care to join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, City Attorney Black, is there a report out of closed session?
There is, Mayor. In closed session, there was a motion to direct the filing of an appeal. And let me get the case name up here. In the lawsuit, ongoing lawsuit of Ecological Rights Foundation versus City of Eureka, United States District Court, number 22CV01459JST. And City Clerk Pam Powell will report the results on that motion.
Mayor and council, the motion was made by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Castellano. It was a four yes votes and Councilmember Moulton dissenting. Motion carried.
Thank you. And tonight, I just wanted to give a couple of announcements before we move on with our proclamation. I wanted to let everybody know, you know, sometimes we hear there's nothing happening in Eureka, so I just want to list a few things. So first of all, November 13th is World Kindness Day. Many nations all over the world celebrate World Kindness Day. And my hope is that you might take a moment of your time to smile at somebody, take your shopping cart back, the little things that really make a difference in our community. And that's one of the things I love about our community is that you see that every day in our population. And it really is a blessing to live here for that reason. So that's November 13th. You don't have to wait till then to do something nice for somebody, but certainly make an effort on that day. And then November 8th, which is this coming Saturday, they're going to need volunteers down in Old Town to help decorate the light poles. If you've been down there, there are garlands and the ribbons. It's all starting to come together. So they're out there from 10 to 12 and 1 to 3, and they meet at the Visitor Center, I believe. So if you're looking for something to do on Saturday to be of service and to be a part of the community, join them. November 15th at 10:00 a.m. at the McKay Track is the Veterans Day at the McKay. It's a 5K and a 6K, no, 2 mile and a 6K, I think it is, or maybe it's a 5K and a 6K. Anyway, no, it's a 5K and a 10K. Look at me. So that's always a great time. I'm going to be out there with Veterans for Peace. So come on out, get your groove on, get some air, get some exercise. Free meal is looking for volunteers. And then lastly, on Veterans Day, it's self proper at the Adorni Center, I believe that's at 10:00 a.m. They will be having a celebration. I don't know if it's a celebration, but they will be honoring all of the veterans. If you've never been to that ceremony, it's beautiful. I'd really encourage you to go. It's wonderful to be there. So those are some things happening in our city. So get out and enjoy each other. And with that, we'll move on to our first proclamation, National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness National Family Caregivers Month. And if I see Ms. McKenna, would you be willing to come up? And Katie Moulton will be reading that. Councilmember Moulton. Welcome, Lynn.
City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness and National Family Caregivers Month, November 2025. Whereas, over 7 million Americans are living with Alzheimer's, and this number is projected to rise to nearly 13 million by 2050. In California, there are nearly 720,000 people living with Alzheimer's, over 3,500 of whom live in Humboldt County. And whereas, there are over 11 million unpaid dementia caregivers in the U.S. providing an estimated 18 billion hours of care for people living with Alzheimer's or another dementia. Nearly half of all caregivers who provide help to older adults do so for someone living with Alzheimer's or another dementia. And whereas, Alzheimer's takes a devastating toll on caregivers. Compared with caregivers of people without dementia, twice as many caregivers of those with dementia indicate substantial emotional, financial, and physical difficulties. 74% of dementia caregivers say they are concerned about maintaining their own health. And whereas, Americans living with Alzheimer's and their caregivers depend heavily on support and services like Medicaid. For many people living with dementia, Medicaid is the only way to afford the nursing home stays that most people with dementia need in the late stages and the home community-based care for those in the early and middle stages of the disease. Cuts to Medicaid could mean many people in our community lose access to these vital care services. And whereas, unpaid family caregivers typically don't identify themselves as such, so it can be difficult for local service providers to find them and offer support. And whereas, the Alzheimer's Association is marking November as National Family Caregivers Month and asking the residents of Humboldt County to visit ALZ.org/events/nadam to find, we'll put that link up somewhere, to find resources to help dementia caregivers during National Family Caregivers Month. And now, therefore, I, Katie Moulton, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim November National Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month and National Family Caregivers Month in Humboldt County.
So thank you, Katie, City Council, for recognizing this. We just finished our Humboldt County Alzheimer's Walk last month, and it was the most successful walk in our tenure history. So we had about 600 participants, which was really great. And we just have been growing it since COVID, and we keep to, hope to keep growing it. So there are roughly, as Katie mentioned, about 3,500 people within Humboldt County that we know have dementia. That number is about three years old, so that figure has probably doubled that by now. And you figure there's approximately 2,500 to 3,000 unpaid caregivers. So that's family members and friends that are pitching in to help people with dementia. So it's really important to keep this in the forefront. We've made great strides with research and, and projects and medications that can slow the progress in early diagnosis. And they now have a FDA-approved blood test that is available for certain people that might have the potential to have the biomarkers for dementia. So Alzheimer's Association is fighting for a cure, not just for Alzheimer's, which is one form of many types of dementia, but all dementias that are around, and there's over 100 different kinds. So again, it's very important to keep this in the forefront. I thank you for giving this recognition as November being Alzheimer's Awareness Month and honoring the caregivers that give countless hours to support family and friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynn, for being here and all you do for our community. It's an awful lot. Appreciate you. So that'll take us to presentations, and we will first be having our 2025 Holiday Season Initiatives with Economic Development Project Manager Asbury. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. So we have a number of different holiday initiatives coming up this season, so we decided to combine them all into one presentation for you tonight. So first, we're going to talk about our Regional Shop Local Campaign, which is Choose Humboldt, and we're proud to sponsor that through Humboldt Made. And then we're going to share about a new holiday initiative that's being led by our past five mayors. After that, we're going to highlight the upcoming Eureka Main Street and Henderson Center Open Houses. And then finally, we're going to wrap up with our annual Home for the Holidays Decorating Contest. So I'd like to start by welcoming Rosa Dixon from Humboldt Made. So you're going to notice later in the meeting on consent calendar, we have a renewal of our funding agreement with Humboldt Made. We have that annually to support Friday Night Market, but we've added an additional $5,000 for this year to support Choose Humboldt. And in the past, we've hosted different Shop Eureka campaigns, but it just felt like this season, it was really important to have one united message where we're all saying collectively, like shop regionally. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Rosa.
Do I have control over, or should I click? No, okay. I can do this. Okay. All right. Well, I'm so excited to be here. I love coming every single time because every time I come, I get, can you guys hear me? Because every time I come, I get to talk about a new, fun, exciting thing that Humboldt Made is doing. So Choose Humboldt has been around since 2020. It was a collective partnership with all the community leaders of the county. And it was to really help us get through COVID times. And in today's economy, we decided it's time to bring it back. And the biggest thing that we really need support in is shopping local, choosing to spend our dollars here. And we really struggled with how is the best way to do this? How do we get everyone involved? And so we came up, that's not the right way. There we go. So we came up with a digital passport. So this is going to be an interactive gamified passport, and it's going to have three phases. So the first one is the shop local. It's November and December this year. We're launching in Eureka on the 14th, which is really exciting. It's easy to download. It does not require any personal information to download, which is great news for the user. For me, I wanted all that personal information, so not great news for me. No, I'm just kidding. There'll be an additional survey that people fill out that will kind of, they'll be allowed to give their information as they want. But what it is, is it allows people to engage with the local stores and in a way that's a little different than other shopping passports. So it allows them to do check-ins, vibes, and rate businesses through buzzwords such as like groovy, nice environment, great service, that type of thing. So that's the first phase. The second passport is the dine and stay, which is in our shoulder month, January, February. And that's going to be more targeted through tourism, bringing people in through, you know, staycations, coming in from out of the area, and really supporting restaurants in months that we don't typically see that. But California actually has a January is Restaurant Month, and we haven't really done too much of that in Humboldt, so we're really going to be promoting that. And then the May through October is Experience Humboldt. And those are going to be the events like Friday Night Market. And we're going to encourage things like, you know, paddling in the bay and the zoo and all that sort of stuff. So it's going to be an 18-month program. And so how it works is you download Vibe Maps. You engage by, like I said, rating, giving vibes, and you earn badges, which then puts you in a drawing to win prizes. And the prizings are going to be three different levels. The first level is going to be, you know, when you first engage, you're going to get like a sticker, which is going to be fun and exciting. When you first download the app at the events, you're going to get a shopping bag. So we're excited about that. And then the prizes kind of build. So the big prize will be like a big staycation with like a weekend at, you know, in Trinidad at the Lost Well Inn in a restaurant. So it will be, you know, incentivized between that. We plan to really market it through the shopping bags, through the different posters. And we came up with this as a full collaboration with all of Humboldt. And we partnered with the cities, the county, and the chambers. And so there are 300 businesses that are included in this and the first round. And through that, we feel like we're going to have a really amazing, strong campaign, and everyone is really excited about it, as I am. So thank you guys for supporting. Do you have any questions or?
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for putting this together. When you were talking about the passport, I'm curious what the outreach looks like for that. Where are we communicating that? Which mediums?
Yeah, so it is going to be, there's going to be posters in every shop and all the stores in Humboldt County. And that's being distributed through Humboldt Made and all the chambers. It's also going to be on all the social media of Humboldt Made, Friday Night Market, The Chambers. And then we're doing tons of press releases and a ton of events. So all the events that are coming up, like the, the open houses and the holiday shopping events, we will be there talking about it, giving out free bags and stickers and promoting it and all that sort of stuff. And, you know, Humboldt Made is a small town, and, and I think people hear about things pretty fast, and they really love prizes. Like everyone loves a good prize. And we're making the prizes good, and the businesses to, you know, for them to participate, it doesn't cost anything, you know, and that's been the whole point of this, was that we want to take the burden off the businesses. We really want to support the businesses. And the message is really clear. We have to support local. We have to shop local. We have to support our community. And this is a fun way to do that.
Well, no, that's, that's, that's good to hear because that was another follow-up question is like, what's the cost of businesses? And it doesn't sound like anything other than like, yes, we want to be part of this. What are the materials that we need? So?
We are providing all that as well.
Right.
There's like no burden to the businesses or to the user of the app, right? So it's free to them as well. And Vibe Maps is a national, it's a national app that's used everywhere. If you download it right now, there are local businesses that are already included in it. Dick Taylor's is and all that stuff. You, they do, and they work with cities. It took quite a bit of convincing to get them to consider Humboldt County as a city, but that's what we did. We convinced them. And so we were able to incorporate the entire county into the project, which is the first time they've ever done that. But we're also working with Southern Humboldt, and so it reaches all the way down to Southern Humboldt, to Northern Humboldt, east and west. So all the unincorporated towns and towns are included, including Hoopa Valley and Shelter Cove.
Garberville to Orleans.
Exactly.
Out to Willow Creek. Okay.
Yep, yep. And we really tried to work with our community partners that know their businesses that fit into each of these segments to represent those, so that it wasn't just on us, you know, using AI to pick it, you know?
And then what does success look like for this? What are the metrics that you're using between now and 18 months?
Yeah, so the metrics, so each of the different segments have different metrics because they're very, very different programs and they're, they're, they're targeted and marketing in different ways. The first one is a very localized shop local, spend local advertising and marketing here. The second one is like a hybrid of the two, and then the third one is very targeted towards tourism. So each of those have very different metrics. Here, we want to see engagement of, and I normally have a slide, but I was told to keep it simple. But I think it's engagement of, I think it's 20,000 users of the app, and we want to see an overall lift in our local independent-owned shopping. And so, and I can't, I think it's like, we're hoping for like a 10% lift over last year in the shops that are actually participating in it. So.
Yeah, and then, yeah, anecdotally, just when, when folks ask like, what is Humboldt? Like, I, I tell them to visit here like towards the end of winter, just because of how lush and how verden it can be. So I'm happy to hear that we're focusing on those particular months too for come and stay. Thank you.
Yeah, the dine and stay, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Contrares Deloche?
Well, first, thank you. I appreciate the work and effort that went into having Humboldt kind of looped in. I think it's such a small community that I think it's, it would be beneficial if they could, you know, often be lumped in together for other things too. So thank you for that. I had a question. I'm sorry if you mentioned it, and I might have, I was geeking out on different little portions of it and was kind of excited, so I may have under-listened in a part. Did, is there like a QR code or something? Okay, is that going to be something?
Yeah, so can we put back up the presentation?
Will there be like copies in windows downtown at businesses?
Every store is going to have it. Oh, does it go back? Oh, does it go back up? Oh, okay. Okay, so if we, okay, yeah, so I'll just click right through here. And I can definitely do it because I know how to use a clicker. Okay, so that sign over there, it doesn't have the QR code in it yet because the QR code is not live, and I did not want to put it in there and then people start using it. But that little, that little green sign, that's going to be in every window of every store in our county. And so the funding that you, that the, that the community's supporting, you guys supporting is this, these print ads, the rebranding, the messaging, and I, and I love the messaging here. We did a, we call it a glow up. So the messaging is buy local, build community. That's the first one. And then, I don't know why that looks like that, but rooted here, rise together. That's like another one. So they're just, they're just really sweet, like little messages. And so there'll be QR codes everywhere. There's going to be shelf talkers that are next to every register. We're also printing coasters that are going to be at all the restaurants and bars with the QR codes as well, which I think the coasters, I, that, Charlene came up with that because she works in a bar. I was like, I think that's brilliant. People sit there and just look at it, so.
Cool. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Councilmember Castellano?
Yes, thank you. And again, thank you for all of the work you're doing with Humboldt Made and beyond and the community. I was curious, and I downloaded, I downloaded the app and just checked it out in general, and it seems pretty easy to use. But I know some folks are kind of app-saturated, and so are there ways for people to participate? Perhaps not with the prizes and things, but, you know, just to kind of spread the word that aren't app-based.
Yeah, so there are, so there are certain towns, like Garberville has a really amazing passport program that is not a part of the app, that we are also promoting, and Fortuna does as well, and we're promoting those as well. And then we'll be doing other like giveaway things for just posting pictures on social media and stuff like that. You know, our demographic are iPhone users that use technology, and so that's really what we're targeting. And there was some pushback initially with like, you know, older generation, and, and we kind of just had to say like, we love you guys and thank you so much for supporting local, and we're going to focus, we're, we're going to kind of focus in on a, you know, a digital age is kind of what we did. But we will have lots of opportunities through the entire season that will have like online giveaways that are not associated with the app as well.
Great. And then, let's see. I appreciate the three phases, and I was just curious in terms of, you know, the dine and stay. I, I for sure promote, you know, different hotel, you know, recommend hotels to people who are coming. But in terms of, you know, how will this be kind of reaching out of the area audiences that might come here for their holiday shopping or might come here to stay?
Yeah, so the dine and stay will be, like I said, like a hybrid of a local, like staycation. And we do monthly articles, we do weekly articles, but one of our monthly features for Choose Humboldt is about staycation. So we really promote the staycation aspect. But we are working with some partners in the Bay Area and Southern California, especially in the airports that are servicing, and we're hoping to do some marketing and work with HLA and, and try and do some marketing out of the area as well for, you know, especially when we move into the Experience Humboldt because we're going to be running a big campaign that's come for Friday Night Market's day for the weekend. And it's going to be an entire experience weekend that we're going to be promoting. And that's going to be really about tourism and really about Experience Humboldt in a way that people don't even know about it, so. All to come.
Yes, thank you.
So exciting. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, Leslie, your question kind of tied in perfectly to the next presentation, which is with Ally Jones because it's the past five mayors and their campaign. And because fundraising is difficult this year, they decided to instead promote all of the exciting things happening in Eureka. So like for the Eureka posters, it's going to be directing people to the webpage of a list of all the things that are available. And then the Choose Humboldt will be a piece of that, so the app will be part of it. It'll be part of all the things that are available. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ally. She's joining us via Zoom, and she can share the Eureka for the Holidays campaign.
Hello. Thank you so much, Swan, and good evening. I know I'm, there we go, I'm just a talking voice. But can everyone hear me okay?
We can.
Awesome. Good evening, council members, mayor, and community members. I'm Ally Jones with Illuminated Marketing, and I'm here to share a little bit on behalf of the Eureka Mayor's Coalition about the Eureka for the Holidays. This is a second year of the former mayors coming together, but the first year of a more collaborative campaign that's really designed to help celebrate our city and what makes Eureka so special during this season. Our warmth, our weirdness, and our wonderful community spirit. So as, as Swan just mentioned, this really ties well into what Rosa was just sharing and partners very much with the same message, but a little more Eureka-centric and a little more event-focused to not cross ties with what Humboldt Made is already doing, but really comes together really well. So you can go ahead and go to the next slide, Swan. So this project was born out of a vision to really unite the city around the holidays, support our local businesses and organizations, and make it easier for everyone to celebrate together. So we want to make it very easy for everyone across Humboldt to specifically know what is happening throughout the holiday season in Eureka. And also, similar to Humboldt Made's vision, we want to ease the burden of that marketing and the need to get the word out there for organizations and businesses by making, doing that promotion for them and putting all of that in one central location. So you can go ahead and go to the next slide. So there are so many amazing events that happen throughout the holidays in Eureka, and organizations and businesses pour their hearts into them. Some we know really well, like the Truckers Parade, but there's other really amazing things happening that maybe are hidden gems, and we want to change that. And for us as, as consumers, as people living in the community, it can take a lot of time and effort to try to figure out the, the fun ways to celebrate the holidays and coordinate all of that. And so Eureka for the Holidays is mostly, first and foremost, a landing page that has a central calendar for all of the different events, whether that's from pop-up shops and markets for holiday shopping to volunteer opportunities. and markets for holiday shopping to volunteer opportunities, to services for communities of faith or parties. I just saw one submission came in, our first one, and it's tuba Christmas. I can't wait to hear more about what that is, but all of that, everything in the city of Eureka, ways that the community is coming together to celebrate the holidays. So you'll see a collaborative, shared calendar where businesses and organizations can for free, share their event, and as long as it's in the city of Eureka and it's something that's open to the community, we will have that on our calendar and then share that across the community for people to be able to figure out how and where and what they want to celebrate this year. Let's go to the next slide. So the heart of this campaign is really built around celebrating the warmth, weird and whimsy of Eureka. And to bring that to life, we partnered with a local artist, Calcium Art, to design three really fun mascots who represent Eureka and the spirit of the holidays in Humboldt. So I wanted to introduce them each to you because hopefully you'll see them out and about in the community. Whether it's in our coloring pages we designed or in the posters, we collaborated with Humboldt Made to say, hey, Eureka, here's the events, here's the passport, here's your ticket to an amazing holiday this year. So, um, let's go ahead to the next slide. First, we have Chris Kringlefoot and he is Humboldt's friendliest Sasquatch. You can find him strolling through Old Town with a cup of cocoa, extra whipped cream and sprinkles from Old Town Coffee and Chocolates. And he loves admiring the gazebo holiday lights and getting all of his shopping done with the new app that Humboldt Made has come out with. And also making sure he's supporting our local businesses. So he is really representing the Old Town cozy and warmth and hallmark movie that Old Town really is. Um, and all that can happen there. But let's go to the next slide. Cause sometimes Old Town does get a lot of the love when it comes to the highlights of Eureka. But there's other districts as well that have amazing businesses and places that you can go and things to do. So Yule is our friendly banana slug who is kind of representing the Henderson Center, center area of Eureka. So carrying a wrapped gift from Toy, Toy Box and nibbling on holiday cookies from Cherry Blossom Bakery. Yule is our quirky cheerful, full of holiday spirit banana slug. And Yule's calendar is pretty packed this time of year with holiday events and prepping for the home for the holidays decorating contest that the city puts on every year. And Yule wins, but they need help, their help from Chris and Red to string up those higher lights. So Yule thanks them with sweet treats from Fresh Freeze. And our third mascot of this campaign is Red. And she is a redwood who loves to get dressed up for the holidays. And she sort of also represents that there is events happening all across the stretch of the 101. Way out on one end on Pearson's and on the other side with Carl Johnson Company. I didn't even know that Carl Johnson has this amazing holiday festivities that to be a part of. And so Red makes sure she makes that every year and leaves the stores with some of her new favorite jewelry ornaments to show off at the Sequoia Park Zoo. So our team had maybe the most fun we've ever had with a marketing campaign coming up with these concepts. We hope that this is something that we could maybe use more than one year to just create this fun, unifying and really celebratory way to think about new and old traditions when it comes to celebrating in the holidays. So let's go to the next slide. What you'll see across the campaign hopefully is a lot of things out in the community from posters to gift tags at shops that offer gift wrapping support that are aligned with this campaign. Um, and partnering with schools and community organizations to make sure that, that these materials are available and just reminding, connecting Eureka and the holidays together. And then if you go to the next slide, all of our marketing across social media and press releases, email marketing is all going to be directing people to visit Eureka's website, which is where this will be housed. And to answer a question that was asked earlier from the council, we'll also cross reference our tourism community that is celebrating in the holidays. We'll definitely see the event calendar jam packed with opportunities for them to check things out locally. And, um, so visit eureka.com/holiday is currently in it being built as we speak. And will be hopefully ready to launch in mid-November. But it has, um, just a little bit more of a message from our mayors that are sharing the why behind this campaign. Bringing people together, that calendar of events that really is going to be holiday activities, business events or sales are welcome to be on there, fundraisers, faith services, volunteer opportunities, all sorts of different things. We want that to all be available in one location for people to be able to plan their holidays and, and know, find some new opportunities to celebrate. We're also going to be offering a business toolkit with some downloadable with these graphics that you're welcome to use in your organization, um, for your own marketing purposes. Newsletter copy that if you have an audience, you want to let know about this, you can share that. We'll try to make it as easy as possible because we all know that the holidays are full of to do's. And so we're going to try to make that as easy as possible for businesses and organizations to get the words, word out about this new website and campaign from the mayors. So I think we've got one last slide, but just in closing, this really is about making the season feel a little more connected, a little less stressful hopefully, and a lot more fun. And I'm so grateful that I got to be a part of this campaign and thankful to the city and the collaborative nature of this whole situation happening in this presentation and our local businesses that make this holiday really feel special in Eureka. So, um, our, our call to action here is really, once it is, um, launched, starting next week is to go to that Eureka or visit eureka.com/holiday. And we can also share that submission. Right now, we're really just wanting people to share those events with us so that we can, um, put them in the calendar and have that, that central hub. So that's our outreach that we're doing right now. Um, and if anyone listening to this is wanting to have that link, we can certainly get that, um, out and, and you can submit your event. Any questions or, um, things I can clarify?
Thank you. Do you have any questions? Councilmember Castellano?
Sure. Um, thank you. I love the characters. Um, I do hope that we use it more than one year in a row because it'd be fun to kind of build these characters over time. This is somewhat a tongue in cheek question, but any thought of having, uh, making costumes to go with the characters? And having them, maybe not this year, but maybe next year.
Maybe not. Yes. We, our team got a little carried away. We were like wrapping paper and ornaments and all the things. And so then, um, I, I think it might've been Susan who pumped the brakes up, said like, okay, let's, let's start with gift tags. But I love the idea of costumes. I think that sounds like a blast.
Uh, Councilmember Moulton?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for that presentation and all the work that's gone into this. Um, I saw it up there, but could you highlight please the artist who made all these lovely characters?
Yes. Calcium Arts. And they are a partner of one of my employees. They are a tattoo artist by trade, but also a very talented artist. And, and we definitely want to support their work and make sure that they get a lot of love and attention for this. They don't have a website, but it's if you want to follow them on Instagram or reach out to them that way for, um, their talent. It's just calcium, like the mineral underscore art.
So if I wanted to get Yule tattooed on my leg, I could get that done?
Oh, they would be down.
I'm gonna make notes.
Yes.
Classic. Uh, Councilmember Fernandez?
Make sure you get the QR code too. Uh, it more, I'm, I'm curious because you had said that Chris Kringlefoot is in Old Town meandering around handing out hot chocolate. I'm just curious, city manager, if you have a Bigfoot outfit, outfit that we're unaware of, because?
You can sign me up. I'd be in.
Well, yeah, because then I would be on board for Yule. I'm just saying. So. No, no, no question. Just weird commentary.
Love it.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Thank you so much for your presentation and all you do.
Thank you, Ally. Um, so next I'd like to invite up Amanda Kraschke and she is going to share about the upcoming Eureka Main Street Open House.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, I'm here to share everything we have going on for the holidays for, um, for Eureka Main Street, which is in Old Town and Downtown. First of all, we have our holiday open house on Friday, November 14th. And so we will have late night shopping, um, stores will be opened with treats and, um, specials. We'll have live music. Um, I think we're going to bring in a couple of food trucks. Humboldt Bay Fire will be there for, with their truck and a toy drive. And, uh, we're also going to be, um, collecting food and donations for Food For People. So that should be a really fun evening. We have over 20 businesses that'll be participating. So we hope everybody comes out for that. And then, so the 14th is also the kickoff for, um, choose Humboldt. They'll also be there, um, handing out bags. And we're happy to be part of that. And, um, we have an annual holiday shopping spree drawing that also will begin that night. And so that's for any shoppers that go into participating businesses and spend $10. They get a, um, entry form to win a collection of gift cards from local businesses. And that goes from, um, they're collecting entry forms from November 14th through December 12th. And then the, um, winners will be announced on the 16th. So they'll be able to have a little bit of time to spend that before the month ends. And then we have Santa's arrival in Old Town, which happens the day after Thanksgiving. Um, so that would be Friday, November 28th, and that is from 2:00 to 4:00 PM. And there will be kids activities. Um, Santa arrives, um, via Humboldt Bay Fire Truck, um, which gets everybody excited, including the firemen. They really like to come down and, and participate with that. So we'll also have kids activities at that point. We'll have some face painting and balloon art and stuff like that. Keep people, keep kids occupied while they wait for their time to visit with Santa and, um, get a photo taken with him. Uh, and then on Small Business Saturday, which is Saturday, November 29th, we kick off the day with the snowball drop at 11 o'clock. And, um, if you've never been to that, it's really entertaining. We have basically a giant air gun that shoots ping pong balls into the crowd. And the ping pong balls all have, um, and a biz, a participating business and their address written on it. You go to that business and collect their, the prize that they've just decided to give you. So it's a fun way to get people out into the businesses, probably one that they've never, um, considered or known about. So, um, that's a, a fun way to start the day and keep people shopping local. And then we have tuba Christmas on December 6th. And that's at, um, 1:00 and it is a really fun annual event. There's some diehard tuba Christmas fans. So that happens at the gazebo and, uh, we do have a rain contingency plan because, um, rain does bad things to tubas. So if that happens, we'll let you know where that gets moved to, but we'll have to decide that later. They really prefer to play outside because they really fill up the space. And then, um, later in that day, on the 6th, we have our December Arts Alive, which is always a really big festive one to come out to. So we have lots of stuff going on. We're excited to be partnering with Choose Humboldt and with the former mayors. And, um, if you haven't been, well, there's a lot of decorations that have already gone up, but there's a lot more to come. And, um, Downtown and Old Town is the place to be this holiday season. So we hope to see all of you there.
Thanks, Amanda. Amanda, could you clarify the time on the 14th in the evening?
That's from 5:00 to 8:00.
5:00 to 8:00.
Yeah. And we have kids activities that night too. I don't know if I mentioned that.
Are there any questions for Amanda?
Thank you.
Um, and I'd also like to share about the Henderson Center Open House. So it's going to be on Thursday, November 20th from 5:00 to 8:00. It's been a holiday tradition since the eighties and unfortunately it had to be canceled last year. So we hope everyone really makes a special effort to attend this year because the Henderson Center merchants really need some help. Um, so there's going to be free family photos with Clydesdale horses, visits and photo opportunities with Santa, the Grinch and other characters and fun surprises at each participating business. And I have flyers on the table out in the hallway if anybody's interested. Um, and then we'll also be promoting both open houses with their info on our socials. Um, and then I'd like to welcome Madison Green to come up and talk about our Home for the Holidays Decorating Contest.
Hi, everyone. I am going to be wrapping up this evening's presentations, talking about Home for the Holidays Home Decorating Contest. Um, it's that time of year again where we're asking our community members, friends, family to submit their homes for Home for the Holidays. It's a great festive event, um, where people get to show off their own unique art and charm to decorating their homes. And then all of us get to drive by and do the festive thing where we, uh, sip hot cocoa and just enjoy the feels. So our timeline, and yes, there's, there's the calcium art right there. Um, so our timeline is going to start November 10th. That's when registration opens. The deadline to register is December 7th. Uh, public voting period is December 9th through 31st. So you're going to look out for yard signs. Um, we're going to have first or third place winners and then the mayor's choice. Uh, the gift cards will be to Eureka businesses. And new this year, I'll go into it, we're going to have shuttle viewing December 17th through 18th. And then winners will be announced at the January 6th council meeting. So, um, shout out to Councilmember Castellano for connecting us with this, but we have a new event this year, which is shuttle viewing. So we're going to start with, um, partnering with HTA at the California Welcome Center. And people are going to be able to come by and enjoy some treats, uh, while they're waiting. But we're going to depart every hour on the hour and go on a little 30 minute tour of the houses that have registered for this event. We're super excited to add this in this year and I hope that it does great and we can continue doing it in the future. Um, you can find registration, voting and information on the City of Eureka website. Easily just type in Eureka holiday season, or you can scan this QR code right here for more information. Um, we're going to be doing a lot of QR codes to communicate with what we have. Um, yep, just like that. I don't want to, you got it? Okay. All right. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Councilmember Moulton?
Oh, thank you. And thank you for that. What, how exciting. Uh, will the shuttle have a cost?
No, the shuttle is actually free.
What a great free thing to do with the family. Go down, get some treats and then go see the lights.
Absolutely. And there's no cost to register your home, also free.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Will Chris Kringlefoot be on those rides?
I mean, we can hope.
Is that a begrudging nod?
All right. Thank you.
So thank you. That's all of our holiday initiatives for this year. We have our regional shop local events. We have our, um, specific Eureka campaigns. And then for residents, we have the decorating contest. So we're excited about everything that's happening. And, um, we're getting off to a good start so far. So thank you.
Thank you so much. A lot happened and a lot to be excited about in this lovely city of ours. Thanks so much. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our next presentation, which is Startup Humboldt Competition. Is that with you too?
Yes. I'd like to, um, invite Samantha Edwards to come up from our local SBDC. And she is going to talk about the, um, Startup Humboldt Campaign that's happening. And in, uh, your consent calendar, we also have a letter of support that we're asking for tonight. And in your consent calendar, we also have a letter of support that we're asking for tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Samantha Edwards. I'm the program coordinator for the Startup Humboldt Competition. Before I detail our initiative, I'm just going to back up a bit to talk about Startup Humboldt. So Startup Humboldt is a fruition of a shared vision and a shared effort. It is a center for collaboration and creativity. It is a support system for small businesses and entrepreneurs in Humboldt County. It was founded via an innovation alliance between College of the Redwoods, Cal Poly Humboldt, the NorCal SBDC, the North Coast SBDC, and Lost Coast Ventures. And so we acknowledge that there have been other economic and workforce development initiatives in the past and or currently. However, they typically operate in silos. So we are exploring what happens when you take a collaborative approach, when you unite key education partners, leading business organizations, as well as our investment partner. Together, we can unlock synergies, we can nurture innovation, and we can strengthen economic resilience. So our flagship initiative is the Startup Humboldt Competition. Here are some of the partnerships I just detailed. In addition, we're also partnering with the Institute for Entrepreneurship Education, which is within Cal Poly Humboldt. Blue Tech Valley has partnered with us, as Blue Lake Ranteria is also in support of this initiative. So briefly, on why we think that this is an important project. Access to capital can be an issue here in Humboldt, and it is causing talent flight. People are leaving our region in search of better funded opportunities elsewhere. And with that, it's a self-reinforcing cycle of disinvestment. When they leave, they take their brilliance, as well as their economic potential with them. And there needs to be a catalyst for change, something to stop that trajectory. So our solution is Startup Humboldt, this innovation hub, as well as our flagship competition initiative. There is data on what simply the existence of an innovation hub can do for a community, especially a rural community. It can inspire revitalization. It can shift the cultural mindset that someone has to leave in order to be successful. We are already a community of creatives, and that creativity can be applied to entrepreneurship and innovation. This can help, you know, you don't need to leave to be successful. You can start a business here. You can scale your business here. And most importantly, you can stay here and be successful here. And that is the kind of mission, that's the values that we're trying to impart, especially by way of this competition. So Startup Humboldt, as an innovation hub, it's also a coworking space. Like I said, it's home to the SBDC, which hopefully you're all familiar with. We provide free resources to small business owners and entrepreneurs. And we're also growing our entrepreneurial community. We're hosting a series of events, which I'll get into in a moment. So we're growing this entrepreneurial ecosystem. We have already, in just three months, two months, several months, hosted hundreds of people in the theme of entrepreneurialism. And our community is really excited about this initiative. So the Startup Humboldt Competition is a high-impact regional initiative designed to grow scalable businesses. We're looking to help fund something that is a disruptive idea. It is a meaningful solution to a significant problem. Or it's a venture that's going to eventually create dozens of well-paying jobs here in Humboldt. We're looking for impact. And through those areas, we will thus build a stronger local economy. I'm sure you've heard of Economic Fuel in the past or Awesome Comp in the past. We, some of the same advisors and judges of those past business competition iterations are part of our subcommittee. And we've learned from those past occurrences. There's a few key differentiators, my favorite being the $200,000 is not prize money. It is milestone-based funding, which means prize money, I'm sure you've all seen the business competition photos where they hold a really big check and it's prize money. And sometimes those people go on vacation, and I'm happy for them. But that doesn't cause the economic impact that we're trying to stimulate. So we are offering access to $200,000 in milestone-based funding, meaning any winners will go through a post-competition incubation period. And that funding will be unlocked in stages once they hit predetermined growth goals. We're doing this to ensure accountability, of course, to ensure impact, and to protect donor investment. We are also, with past competitions, perhaps they were encouraged to get a mentor towards the end. With the Startup Humboldt Competition, every accepted competitor will immediately be linked with a one-on-one business advisor through our partnership with the SBDC. So there will be wraparound mentorship, walking them through every stage of this competition. There will be four mandatory one-on-one business advising sessions for every team. There will also be four mandatory advanced entrepreneurial courses taught by either College of the Redwoods or Cal Poly Humboldt professors. So regardless of whether or not they win this access to milestone-based funding, they're going to leave the competition with a strong entrepreneurial foundation and a clear path to launch or scale their business. And there's also networking and support, just simply by inviting people to the Startup Humboldt building. Teams are building themselves. And then there's also long-term support opportunities by way of our partnership with Lost Coast Ventures. I don't know why this looks like this, but this is a version of hopefully posters that maybe you have seen around town to detail our events timeline. Applications don't even open until December 2nd. So we have gifted ourselves a long timeline in the sense that right now, we're generating awareness. We are helping grow that entrepreneurial ecosystem. We've already hosted several events. We had a kickoff party where several hundred people came to the Startup Humboldt Building. We had an ideation workshop led by a Cal Poly Humboldt professor. We recently hosted an entrepreneur talk in which the founder and managing director of Cypress Grove came and shared insights from their entrepreneurial journey. Upcoming on November 18th, we're hosting a lightning pitch clinic that is hosted by Will Franklin, who's the director of the North Coast SBDC. It'll also be co-hosted by Rosa Dixon of Humboldt Made and Evan Van Aken of Scorch Marker. The two of them can anecdotally share instances of when a strong pitch helped them expand their now nationally distributed products. So being able to tell a compelling story is important for any entrepreneur. Thus, we're offering that education on the 18th. It's going to be really interactive. You, of course, are all invited. It's at the Startup Humboldt Building, 5:30 to 7:30. And then on December 2nd, we are hosting a leadership panel that will have Dan Phillips, who is the former CTO of Hulu. He is a local gentleman. He's also the founder of Lost Coast Ventures. Cal Poly Humboldt's interim president, Michael Spagna, will be on that leadership panel, as will Jennifer Budwig, who's the VP of Redwood Capital Bank, of course. And then an angel investor, S.K. Lee, who is also a local angel investor and founders coach. And she just popped into the innovation hub one day, so it's already kind of drawing in some of these entrepreneurial folks. So that's really exciting. So December 2nd is when applications open. Applications will close January 25th. We will notify the participants that are being welcomed into, we're going to welcome maybe 40 teams or so. We're limited of the capacity, of course, by offering them a one-on-one business advisor. So we can only invite 40 teams into the competition. They will be notified beginning of February. The courses and mentorship I mentioned will happen February and March. And then come end of April, we will have a very friendly, very fun Humboldt-style Shark Tank final pitch event. Friendly Shark Tank final pitch event and award ceremony. What's not on here that's a cool bit is that I'm currently working with the engineering, one of the engineering classes at Cal Poly Humboldt. And those students are designing some of the items for the competition, such as the trophies and the lectern for the front of the room. So this is really a community initiative. And the more members of our community that we can get to be part of it, the more impactful that we can be. These are just the judging rubrics that show, you know, market and problem, team and founder, as well as scalability are some of the more important elements that we will be grading teams on. And then also to remind me to talk about microventures. So the primary focus of this competition, of course, is to fund the next Yakima, the next Wing Afflatables, the next Coca-Tat, the next multimillion-dollar enterprise that is very Humboldt County. We can have a multimillion-dollar business here that doesn't just value profitability. Of course, profitability is important. You need to be green in order to maintain operations. But we have an opportunity here in Humboldt to also grow a multimillion-dollar venture that values economic, or I'm sorry, environmental well-being and community prosperity. We also recognize that there are smaller businesses, smaller microventures, that still make an impact and may make a quicker one. They may not, you know, hire dozens of people, but they may be able to hire a few in a shorter period of time. So we will also name one microventure winner. Some of the criteria is there. They can achieve profitability within 18 months. And most importantly, that that $10,000 award would be a meaningful contribution to their overall startup or scale-up costs. So really, our next step is spreading the word, which is why I am here today. I am asking for a letter of support, which would be really impactful as I am growing our, we're still growing our seed capital, looking for sponsorships. And also, if you have any referrals or recommendations, either to our program, to my presentation, or other local organizations or entities you think would be interested in sponsoring and supporting this initiative. Because every contribution to the Startup Humboldt Competition is a direct investment in local talent and long-term economic resilience. Do you have any questions?
Do you have any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
Just full of them tonight. You were talking about milestone funding, and so I'm curious, the milestones are going to be unique somewhat to each of the teams, correct?
Exactly. Yeah, they're going to be completely tailored. Every business is different. Every stage of business is different, too, because we are inviting, and thank you for this question, we're inviting both concepts, business concepts. You might have a million-dollar idea, and we're going to help you make it a $10 million business. Or you might have a pre-existing business that's ready to scale. So those growth goals will absolutely be tailored to each individual competing team, and they will be agreed upon. The competitor, the competing team will be part of that process with their business advisor.
And then for these winners, then, is it $200,000 for each team that potentially makes it? Or is it $200,000 in funding that is going to be split? Okay.
Access to $200,000. So it is a bit needs-based, because we're not in this to just give away money. We're looking to invest in something that could be very impactful, or that will be very impactful on our county. So if they only need $50,000, then of course, we're only going to provide them with access to that $50,000 if they hit those predetermined growth goals.
And then I saw that some of the partners include CR, Cal Poly Humboldt. Have you done this presentation or reached out to any of the K-12 districts?
We have done it to the Arcata High School. I have been in touch with Colby Smart, I believe his name is. And I was supposed to present to the Humboldt County Office of Education Council meeting last month, but it was canceled. So I am on the calendar for the next one to, again, talk about just letting our youth know about this innovation pipeline and inspiring them while the competition won't be open to anyone under the age of 18. If a 16- or 17-year-old has a groundbreaking idea, they can partner with their parents and join the competition. But yes, that is in the pipeline.
Okay. So have you reached out to Eureka City Schools?
I believe through my upcoming presentation to Colby's group, I will be better networked with them.
Thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Councilmember Castellano? Just a quick question. Thank you. Are there a maximum number of winners that, or will it kind of, in terms of the $200,000, like, you know, people will get no less than $20,000 or something like that? Have you thought about that internally?
We, there will at least be two winners, of course. There'll be the microventure winner and the scale venture winner through some funding that we have received from Blue Tech Valley. If one of those two winners does not fall into agriculture, water, or energy, there will be a third ag-water energy winner. And then it's needs-based. So if there are two, I mean, we're really, all we really need is one to be impactful. But if we have the opportunity to provide funding that will make a significant contribution to that startup or launch, then we'll try to name as many winners as we can, of course. But we don't want to reduce the amount of funding so much that it's not impactful.
Exactly. Thank you.
Of course.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate it.
What a great evening so far. Love these kind of meetings. A lot of great things happen in our city. So with that, we're going to move on to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. So do we have anybody here that would like to speak in public comment that's not on the agenda? You can stand in line on the side there if you'd like, or... So someone coming up? Hello, nice to see you.
Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, regarding your plan for pay-to-park lots, I read with interest that the plan for pay-to-park lots has advanced. Was there something that was missed in the Time Standard article? Since bicycles are also using public streets and sometimes sidewalks, what are the plans as far as fees for them to also park? I would imagine there will be a separate area in the lots for bicyclists to park and lock their bicycles. I would certainly hope that the bicyclists would be more than willing to help pay for this opportunity to help the City of Eureka to offset the costs involved with these pay-to-park lots. On the same subject, is the city council considering putting time limits or parking meters in Henderson Center? I have noticed vehicles remaining for long periods of times in the same spot. I have copies for each of you. Thank you for your time and consideration, Phyllis Coy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Come on up. Welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Vee Loring. I have something to introduce into the record. Yeah, just a draft. And this is on, I'm urging the council to take up the matter of a trans sanctuary city ordinance in the city of Eureka. I started my life here in Eureka, and when I realized that I needed to restart my life as a woman, even before I knew that was what I was doing, I chose to return to Eureka. This is a place I've always felt safe. Being trans is something that really highlights the vulnerability and connection to others. You depend on medical professionals for the medications that make you feel like you really exist for the first time. You depend on strangers to see you for who you want to be, even when it doesn't yet come naturally to you. I feel incredibly fortunate that Eureka and Eurekaans have been nothing but supportive and kind to me. Not everyone is so kind, though, and across the country, and even in this state, the federal government has embarked on a project to harm trans people and to punish those who stand up and help us be ourselves. Threats from the Department of Justice have caused multiple gender clinics to close their doors and created a climate of fear around trans health care. I believe that this effort, while terrifying, can be stopped. If we stand up together and say we will not be divided, we will not arrest or report members of our community for being trans or providing care, I believe these efforts to drive trans Eurekaans into hiding will have no power. This is why I urge the city council to take up the matter of a trans sanctuary city resolution. It will increase the sense of safety and pride that I feel in my hometown. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Come on up. Hi.
Hello.
I'm Sophia Nix, co-chair of the Healthcare Committee with Humboldt DSA. Being trans can be frightening. One reason why is we are afraid of the concern that our medicine and medical procedures will be taken away from us. Life-saving medicine and medical procedures. Making Eureka a trans sanctuary city would give me and my community one less reason to be afraid. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Come on up.
Hi, I'm Pippa Coulter. I'm a pediatrician. I work in Eureka. Um, I moved here two and a half years ago when my former state made it a felony for me to give gender-affirming care or even refer my patients for such care in other states. Um, and so I'm happy to be able to be giving primary care in Eureka full-time. And that includes gender-affirming care for children and teens. Um, what we do is evidence-based. It's recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics and all the professional organizations, um, who are using evidence-based medicine. I would really like to see this resolution passed to help support the providers who are being threatened, you know, at the national level unlawfully, um, with, um, asking people to report us for doing care that's appropriate. And I would like it mostly for the sake of my patients who, um, shouldn't have to be afraid. And they should hear that their community is behind them, that will stand up for them and make this a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Hi. Come on up. Welcome. I'm going to raise this a little bit for you, okay? A little bit more. There you go.
I have a question that's in about your mobile device policy. Currently states, uh, personal use is to be kept to a minimum and reserved for incidental necessity when an employee's privately owned device-
Can you stop for just, I'm sorry, one moment? Can you tell me which item that is?
It's on the consent calendar.
Okay, so it's on the consent calendar. So if you'd like to have that item pulled, you should recommend it to a council member prior to-
I didn't know if it would get approved, so I didn't bother.
She can also, they can also speak on it during this comment period, during this comment period, fine? Okay, great. Okay, I'm sorry to interrupt you. It was just procedural. Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, okay. Your mobile device policy states, personal use is to be kept to a minimum and reserved for incidental necessity when an employee's privately owned device is temporarily unavailable. EPD found your senior IT analyst without a phone to his name. But this was no secret. He proudly told me his personal phone was provided by our tax dollars. Ensure city devices are not rooted and do not have unauthorized software firmware installed. If he didn't root the device, who approved him to install dating apps? Your device policy forbids personal use that is abusive, illegal, or inappropriate, but specifically capturing or storing personal photos or videos. After EPD reviewed an extensive library of explicit media that your IT analyst created and transmitted from his work phone, he told them he did not have my consent to film me identifiably while enclosed or engaged in intimacy. He knew the rule conceptually, but couldn't sustain the situational awareness to realize not harming the apple requires active behavioral self-monitoring. He relied on me to stop him as he acted on impulse. So whenever he filmed without announcing, I was unable to stop him from exporting my body to an unaccountable corporation. Nor was I informed that city policy gave him no expectation of privacy. End quote, delete functions do not restrict city access. EPD told me your investigation was on hold and that if I withdrew, you would speak to me. You did not investigate before reinstating him June third, here on camera, days before the police file was available. He explained to me how he had automated your systems to carry out the duties of several people on one salary by working remotely at all hours from the device. You let him engineer his own job security and rewarded him by looking the other way. When I came forward with the files, he told police I did not consent to. His boyfriend and former employee has argued why. He believes I deserve this for reasons such as I am a college dropout and bad at formatting emails. I would love to testify at a restraining order hearing about how I tried to reach him in private to resolve my privacy violation. How they retracted the textbook Nazi libel they spun in their haste to broadcast my ethnicity. Publicly ridiculed, then inverted my legitimate fears of surveillance. I replaced my security system that Derek Crimely reset for me shortly before ghosting. But I don't have the means to ever truly secure my privacy. They're uniquely equipped as IT experts, homeowners and landlords who oversee the surveillance feeds around the city that he loves showing off. Finally, violations of the city's mobile device policy may subject the employee to disciplinary action up to and including termination. This is an empty threat. Not even documented sexual exploitation on a city device merits termination. Your staff have precedent to use their taxpayer-funded devices however they wish. You've handed some former EPD officers a case for wrongful dismissal. Since the revised device policy wasn't published on agenda, can you clarify what changes since 2019 are being adopted today?
So we don't answer questions during public comment, but if you'd like to give a call or send an email, I'd be happy to check in with you. Is there anyone else from the public who would like to comment during public comment? That's in chambers. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one with their hand raised on Zoom.
Great. Then we will close the comment, public comment period and bring it to council reports. We will start with Councilmember Castellano.
Um, let's, sorry, I wrote it down. Um, okay. I attended the Eureka Main Street meeting in which, um, several new board members joined the Board of Eureka Main Street. So it's really great to, um, have new people stepping up. And I want to just thank Sue from Bell Star, who's been the board president for the last couple of years and really did a remarkable job, um, who, you know, finished out her term there. Um, I attended a Humboldt Tourism Workshop, uh, where folks were giving input into the tourism sector. And I participated in several economic, uh, development-related conversations around technology and, and opportunities, um, here in the Humboldt area.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you very much. Uh, kind of hell of a lot, so I'm going to go quick. Um, let's see, I met with Special Agent Couch from the EPD, um, who is their union president, mostly just to build rapport. Uh, went to the Women in Business Luncheon, sponsored by, oh no, who did it? Nope. Thank you, Kiwanis. Yes, the service clubs, gotta love them. Um, sure, have more to say about that. Um, I observed the October twenty eighth, uh, uh, cop board meeting. Glad to see that the official mutual aid agreement signed by local law enforcement, uh, is in effect, signed by local law enforcement agencies from towns, the county and tribal governments, uh, attended the Humboldt Bay Fire Meeting. Um, pretty routine stuff, except that we got two new firefighters, uh, filling in the ranks there. And congratulations to firefighter Rebecca Sazowski, Sazowski, who, uh, completed her apparatus operator trainings, moved up to engineer. So now she is a, a paramedic firefighter operator. Um, we're building that, building all that talent from the inside. That's really good to see. And the CR Firefighter Academy is one step closer to being able to train all our local firefighters here from, uh, cadet all the way through getting on the engine. Um, I can't talk about that yet. Uh, oh, I just wanted to mention if you're having trouble, uh, stretching the food budget this month, Food For People, of course, has a variety of ways that they can help you out, including the Choice Pantry, upcoming drive-through pickup events. The Jefferson Project has free produce on Saturdays. Um, they're doing, if you want to help either of those, you're going to get some food. Both those sets of people are out there to help you, along with lots of others. Um, if you want to help out, um, both Food For People and the Jefferson Project will take volunteers, cash donations. Uh, just be real careful. I know a lot of people want to, um, really want to help out and see that everybody in our community gets, um, plenty of food in their belly, but there are also some scammers taking advantage of that. So look for an accredited organization, you know, somebody that you're familiar with. Or, um, you know, giving, giving food is, is hard to misinterpret on its own. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, attended a de-escalation training. I think that was back on October twenty-third. It was at the Warfinger and, uh, it was being conducted by, you'll forgive me, I always forget Jacob Rosen's title.
Managing Mental Health Condition.
Thank you. And Officer LaFrance. Um, I think it was a pretty good turnout. And I hope, uh, next time we, we offer that, uh, to our, to our business community too. I know that's something we've talked about in the past. Uh, attended the Central del Pueblo Dia de los Muertos this past Sunday. That I was, I simply floored with the amount of turnout for that. Uh, all the seats taken, uh, a line out to the, uh, the museum, uh, got to a point where it's like, there are going to be folks who get more from this out of the community than, than I do in this moment. So it's like having to, having to leave at some point so someone else can have it. Councilmember Contreras Deloche was there as well. And, uh, let's see, uh, coordinating with, uh, Councilmember Moulton on bringing together members of the business community through the Chamber of Commerce and, and advocates of the unhoused community, trying to put together, uh, some sort of, I wouldn't call it a two-by-two, but something informal where we have an opportunity to talk with each other. Uh, then myself and Councilmember Contreras Deloche are continuing to meet with, uh, members of city staff to discuss the topic and feasibility of an authorized encampment. Though this last week, uh, this last month, we took a needed detour to discuss, uh, the city's involvement in the food needs for our community, as it was just mentioned, given the, uh, potential partial fulfillment there of, uh, SNAP benefits. Uh, so, uh, there'll be more on that later this week. But in the meantime, I'm grateful for the businesses and community members that have stepped up, helping with the free low-cost or, yeah, free or low-cost meals, Old Town Coffee and Chocolates, uh, and then Humboldt Gold Exchange offering meals for students, uh, if the families are able to show a SNAP or, uh, EBT card. And then I think it was our Rubegu Vega Queen, Olivia Gambino, who was handing out supplies to, what, last week? And then I think city staff was also telling us that St. Vincent's and, is it St. Vincent's and Free Meal that both need volunteers or, yeah, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah. So, always volunteers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche, I mean Bauer. No, I was looking at her and I skipped you.
We look a lot alike.
I know.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, I attended the Humboldt Bay Fire Meeting and as, uh, Councilmember Moulton saying, uh, College of the Redwoods Fire Academy is really close to, um, accreditation, is that how you say it?
Accreditation. And they, they did receive it in January will be their, their first semester of, of training.
Yes, it's going to be great. Um, I attended, uh, RCEA, Redwood Coast Energy Authority Board Meeting. And we have a, a good project coming that hopefully I can, I can share, um, a good renewable energy project, local one. So we're always pushing for more of that. Um, I attended the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association Movie Night at the Eureka Theater. And that place, I wish we had five million dollars to, to restore that building. It's, it's amazing. And the volunteers there, um, it's got a great group of volunteers that are working hard to restore it and, um, just bring it back to its, uh, former glory. Um, I want to talk about the, the P Street Halloween Party. So the city, you know, allows, um, allows, you know, to be able to block off streets and, um, you know, insurance is always a challenge. But luckily, RC MBA helped, um, make that possible. But want to thank the neighborhood. I mean, I think it's, I don't know how many blocks it is now, but trying to guess how many kids showed up and it's getting kind of out of control, like maybe two thousand, you know, who knows? Um, streets are filled with-
There was actually over three thousand adults there.
Yeah, over three thousand adults and a lot of kids. And it went on for four hours or five hours and with, you know, music and bands and, um, it was awesome. And I recommend to people, I want to thank city staff that manned the barricades and, and deal with that. I couldn't do it without city staff. So thank you. Um, and I hope other people do it because you get to see all these community members. You don't see neighbors come out. Everybody's out having a great time. And it was, uh, it was a really special night. So I encourage others to do it. You know, um, probably want to talk to someone about insurance and that's, that's the only issue that made it a little challenging, but it was great. It was a great community event. Um, and I think that's it. Thank you.
I would just add, Councilmember Bauer, that Lombard Hills had three thousand seven hundred cellphone-carrying adults visiting.
We're going to beat that next year.
Okay.
So just for clarification, you, you ping people's cellphones to find out how many people are, is that how you get the information? Yeah. Interesting. Okay. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Okay. Uh, so let's see, um, I got to attend Pathway to Payday, um, which, uh, it was a smaller group this time, but, um, I still, you know, um, I hope the rest of the council sometimes gets to participate in that too. It's just really, um, awesome to see people there that are, um, you know, a variety of types of people just trying to get a, a leg up. And, um, I love, you know, if you've ever been there, Betty has, Betty Chin has this wall and it's filled with stars. And it, on it is written the names of people who have found employment or gone through programs or found housing. And those stars represent their success. And I love watching it fill and there's really no space anymore, but it just continues to fill. And it's just a very inspiring place. And, um, I also got to attend the Community De-escalation Training with Jacob Rosen and Commander LaFrance. Commander LaFrance could be a stand-up comic. Uh, we all really enjoyed it. Um, it was extremely educational. Um, I've attended stuff like that before. This is the first I've attended it through the city. I felt like I got so much more out of this than I had. So I just couldn't recommend this enough to everybody to take this. Um, I took it so that I could, um, be one of Jeff Davis's volunteers, um, down there in Old Town Stewart. So, um, and then, uh, so it was excellent. I, I just couldn't recommend it enough. And then I got to do the Women in Business Luncheon that was sponsored by the Kiwanis. Um, I also attended an Alia webinar. Um, this one was on safety for electeds. And some of the materials they're going to be making available to us. I already have some of it. I'm not sure what, I'll, I'll check in with Pam and find out what the appropriate protocol. Some of this is stuff that I really feel like all electeds in Humboldt County really should have access to some of what I just learned. Um, and, uh, they had, uh, security experts. I don't know, did you get to do this or no? Um, they had security experts, actually, one of them from Washington DC and stuff like that, that was talking to us about the safety and some of the, um, issues that, that we're facing as electeds and then also our staff. Um, uh, you know, catching strays from, you know, stuff. So I, I, I'll, I'll talk with them, but I really would like to get that to you guys. Um, I got to go to that P Street Halloween Party with my little boy who is obsessed with Halloween. It was incredible. Thank you to everybody that's making like magical moments for all these little kids. It was, uh, so jam-packed with people. It was almost anxiety inducing. Um, but it was incredible, um, and just a lot of fun. And, uh, I love seeing, it reminds me of when I was a kid and Halloween was a huge deal. So I, I'm glad to see that. Um, I went to Central del Pueblo's, um, Dia de los Muertos Celebration at the Eureka Theater. That was amazing. Um, it was beautiful. The performances were incredible. Um, I was really touched. Uh, it was just, it was really something to walk in and they had the whole entrance decorated with their old friend does. And then, you know, just, it, it was really something. Um, I, I met with some members of the faith community about, um, food and food resources and food drives are coming up and who can donate what and just kind of getting some of that. Um, uh, as Councilmember Fernandez, um, said, I, in light of a conversation that I had had with, um, uh, what is Jeff Davis's official title?
Project Manager.
Project Manager Davis. I am sorry. Um, Incredible Davis. And so, um, I'd had a conversation and, um, then I reached out to Councilmember Fernandez and said, are you okay with us shifting gears for this one ad hoc committee? It was a day before. We're like in light of food insecurity and the way that these two things are interconnected off of the conversation I had with, um, uh, Project Manager Davis. Um, we talked about these resources. And I bring this up because, um, there's a list. It's about five pages long and growing, um, that they have, um, and that's going to be on CAPE's site and I think on your, City of Eureka's site.
It'll be on, uh, Uplift's Eureka's homepage, as well as, um, the Resource Centers.
Okay, thank you. So that you can direct people to those resources. Um, it's all the resources that are helping with food around the county. Um, and some of the stuff that they have planned. The, um, College of the Redwoods has a large food drive that they're doing with Food For People that's going to be on the thirteenth. Is that, I think it's on the thirteenth, right, Miles?
It's not announced yet.
Oh. Pardon.
So we, it, it will be upcoming soon? And I'll, I'll give a little update on my-
Okay, okay, sorry. Okay, so there's things that I should not be announcing yet. Anyway, um, but there's a list of a bunch of other stuff. And so people that are going to be able to be available to volunteer, I just, um, this is something- be available to volunteer. I just this is something that, you know, I we don't know when things are going to be funded. Things were already tight for people. They're so much harder right now. So please, if this is a time where you have, I've been taking people grocery shopping. So if this is a time where you have a little bit more, please give volunteer, you know, chip in and and you still have an hour to vote. I voted, but you still have an hour to vote. So that's my report, Mayor.
Thank you. And outside my announcements, I'm just going to share a few things in my report. I too attended the Kiwanis Women in Business Luncheon. And I wanted to say that the people that were honored, Businesswoman of the Year was Carol Crossley from Celebration Boulevard. And if you don't know Carol, you should. She is a volunteer extraordinary and has done so much for our community over the last forever years. So that was really wonderful to see her receive that award, very well deserved. Let's see, Jan Carr with Humboldt Supes on and they're an organization that goes out and feeds homeless folks. And they've been doing this for a couple of years. Incredible, incredible team. Got Nonprofit Business of the Year. And then the Woman of Distinction was Dr. Kathy Thornhill from Rise Advising Services. So three incredible woman women. And it's always such it's inspiring to see that they get the awards, but to listen to what all their accomplishments because people really it's incredible, the things people accomplish in our community. I went to the Cape Board Meeting. I got to go spend time at Free Meal for the first time in far too long. And it's always such a gift to be able to go down there and just wipe tables and talk to people. They are looking for volunteers and they have sign up sheets for Thanksgiving and probably Christmas, but Thanksgiving, they're going to need a lot of support. I went to the Pack Out Clean Pack Out Green Team cleanup at Herrick, which is always fun. And I would encourage you, if you've never been, I say this every time I go, but if you've never been, I really encourage you to go. It's a great time, great community, outside, beautiful. We live in paradise. Spent last Saturday putting garlands up on the light poles in Old Town. That's also a lot of fun. It's wonderful. And there's an opportunity to do that again this weekend. Community pride. I was sick and I missed Boo at the zoo and the Zumba Tham, which was such a bummer. And then I met with several constituents and talked with a lot of people on the phone this last couple of weeks. So that's what I've been up to. And with that, we're going to move on to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. Pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-22, if a member of the public would like an item in the Consent Calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request shall be made to a council member prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the Consent Calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. And I know that G2 is being pulled. Are there any other items that need to be pulled? Okay, can we get a motion to approve the balance?
I move consent minus item G2.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Great. So that moves us to G2 Withdrawal of Measure N Local Coastal Program Amendment with Director Kenyon. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, Council. This item is just an administrative cleanup item that has been needed for some time now. Measure N, which was adopted in November of 2010, included a provision stating that the land use and zoning changes passed by the measure would become null and void if not certified by the Coastal Commission. And it's now been 15 years and the measure has not been certified by the Coastal Commission. And staff and the city and the property owner still support a vision of infill development at the site, but have recognized that Measure N isn't the path to get there.
Great. Any questions for Council? I mean, not Council, for Director Kenyon, Councilmember Fernandez.
Always.
Thank you for that. And and again, this is this is something that that predates me even living up here. But I hear about Measure N every so often. So I'm just curious more on the procedure. I think you'd alluded to the fact that it had in the measure then that if it couldn't get past the Coastal Commission, that it would just be declared null and void. And so that's the case here.
Correct.
Okay, so it's not someone's coming to us saying like, hey, this measure didn't work out. Can we just rescind a measure? That's not how ordinances or those type of things work, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that's that's really all I was hoping to get an answer to on a forum like this. Because again, 15 years does seem like a long time for unfortunately, something to not come to fruition. But with the potential passage of this tonight, then what would be the next steps that we're looking at? I know we have that, I don't want to call it nefarious, but we have that housing element coming up in 27. So.
Yeah. So with Measure N being null and void, it's reverting the the zoning is the zoning that it's been since the local coastal program was adopted in the 80s, which is public facilities. So we do need to go through a rezoning process to get, you know, commercial industrial residential development at the property. The property owners are currently working through their cleanup. They just received a follow up coastal development permit for some additional testing. And they're hoping to get to their final remedial action plan. And then from there, hopefully, you know, we'll work with them and the Coastal Commission and figure out a path forward permitting path forward.
Yeah, it's been nice to see it cleaned up and the derelict train cars taken away. So this the specter of this land is going to come back before us again at some point as a council.
Correct.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any further questions? Thank you so much. Seeing no one, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public here to comment on this item? Or who would like to? Seeing no one in chambers, do you see anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we'll bring it back to Council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Fernandez.
I'll move to approve staff recommendation. And do I have to read it?
No.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Legislative Action Correspondence? Nothing this season. Yeah, okay. Ordinances and Resolutions, the City of Eureka's Emergency Operations Plan with Public Works Director Allen.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The plan before you today, we have Kristin Galt, our Public Works Analyst, has done a ton of work on. So she's here to help present with me. She's gonna start the presentation and I'll finish up. But we kind of go over just kind of the key points through the plan and then we'll open for some questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As Kelly stated, I'm Kristin, Public Works Operations Analyst in Public Works. And I'm going to start off our overview of the Emergency Operations Plan, which is commonly referred to as the EOP. So the purpose of the EOP provides a framework for coordinated response to major emergencies and disasters. It defines roles, responsibilities, and operational strategies for city departments and partners. And it promotes a flexible, common sense approach that's both adaptable and scalable to any incident. You may be asking what's due in this 2025 plan. And in a nutshell, it's the whole community approach. It's aligned with Senate Bill 160, Emergency Services Cultural Competence. It engages the entire community, residents, community based organizations, businesses, and regional partners. It prioritizes inclusion for people with disabilities and access and functional needs. And it builds community resilience through collaboration and preparedness education. The structure of the EOP basically consists of three components. The first is the basic plan, which consists of core concepts, policies, and an operational framework. The second is functional annexes, which are procedures for critical functions like alert and warning, care and shelter. And then lastly, there's the hazard specific annexes, which are procedures for specific events like earthquakes, fires, storms, and power outages. It should be noted that these annexes are to be published at a later date. The EOP also support is supported by other key plans like the Continuity of Operations Plan, the Emergency Operations Center Manual, and the Humboldt County Hazard Mitigation Plan. And with that, I will turn it over to Kelly.
Okay, so the concept of operations is to integrate the Incident Command System, Standardized Emergency Management System, and the National Incident Management System. This allows for the same common language, processes, titles to be used at the local, state, and federal level. So we're all communicating clearly. Establishes coordination with field response, local government, county, state, and federal. Ensures scalable responses, leaving local control and supported by the regional and state systems. Promotes unified command and situational awareness. The emergency management phases are kind of a structural approach to an emergency. And the goal is for a long term resilient community. So these mitigation, preparedness, and response and recovery will help us get there. The Emergency Operations Center is the central coordination hub during an emergency. The city's primary location is the City Hall. The second one is the Humboldt Bay Fire Classroom over on Harrison K. And then a backup is the water treatment plant there on W Street. There are three levels of activation monitoring where you can have some key individuals set up in activated in the EOC, and they will monitor even an event or an emergency that might be happening to see what's going to happen. There's a partial activation for EOC where you set core individuals that would be activated in the EOC. And maybe we need to work longer hours to address the emergency or address the threat. And then there's the full force activating EOC where we are on everybody's end 24/7 until the emergency or the threat is dealt with. Organization for the EOC is done through SIMs, Functions of Management. And these individuals come to the group with this knowledge. So management oversees the response, planning coordinates the action to address the emergency, operation collects the information of the emergency to support decision making, logistics, they provide all the resources to help with the emergency, and then finance and admin is handling the cost, grants, documenting everything so we can get funding. And finally, next steps, the next step is staff would like to start a committee with individuals from all of our departments so that they can understand their roles, primary and secondary. They can help us develop the annexes that would come later in date. And then we can really start training and planning. We would do regular drills, exercises, and community outreach. We continue to collaborate with Humboldt County OES and regional partners. And final is, you know, recommendation that you adopt the resolution to adopt this 2025 plan. And if you guys have any questions.
Is there any questions for staff? Are there any questions for staff? Not is there. Councilmember Bauer?
Thank you. Yeah, it's a riveting read. I'm sure everybody.
Right? We tried to just hit on the topics. Otherwise, it goes very detailed.
No, it's very important, actually. It's a very important document. I had a couple suggestions, like in the beginning, we talked about the EOC, Emergency Operations Center, but we don't talk about the location. And for me, I just to have it somewhere in the first page or wherever we talk about EOC, just so people understand that it's here.
Okay.
And then I also thought, oh, Director of Emergency Services on page 17, city manager is in charge. And then it says in their absent absence designate designated staff may assume role. I think we should have a clear chain of command. I mean, city manager, you know, building falls on them. I mean, he's not going to be able to designate designate anybody. So.
You're not supposed to smile when you say that.
Just being honest, you know, big earthquake, it could be a problem. So I think probably the next in line would be Public Works Director, you know, somebody that knows the facilities knows.
Okay.
So I think that would be really important just for safety purposes. And then I I was curious, we started this in 2013, right?
No.
No?
I think 2014, the original one was passed. And then it's been 10 years and they've it's been about two years of working on it to catch up to SB, the new requirements.
So the main focus was on getting up to SB 160 standards. Is that what it was? Okay.
Yes.
I was just curious. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
Thank you. I know you guys have more that you're doing with this and that it's kind of you're building it out and that this is, you know, a lot of framework. I really appreciate it. This is an area of interest for me. That's why my reports frequently include some kind of training around, you know, disaster preparedness and emergency preparedness. I think this is great. I love, you know, that there's going to be this plan for how that's going to go. Same thing, I was thinking we need to have like clear like this is who's doing what and and have that ready, not because any of us are planning for a building to fall on our city manager. So but yeah, I thank you. I really appreciate it. Yeah.
Questions? Councilmember Castellano?
It's a little bit more of a comment. Okay.
Knock yourself out. Everybody's doing comments in this moment. So.
Thank you for the plan. I could I could veil it as a question. I really appreciate the whole community approach, you know, and especially the consideration of people with disabilities, because there are many services for people with disabilities in some of, you know, the tsunami hazard area and things like that. And for sure, if if you need, I'm sure you have plenty of relationships with organizations to support folks, but always happy to help make connection, bridge communication if needed.
Yeah.
And then also, just to in the whole community approach, you know, there are many ways that people kind of understand their sense of place and evacuation. But I think that considering like artists and culture keepers as partners in terms of, you know, like identifying the tsunami zone through murals. Or anyway, there just could be some creative ways that could create a lot of impact and a different kind of awareness that I think would be good to consider.
Okay.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yeah, in the same vein as everyone else, I appreciate the brevity of this because if you look at the emergency plans for some other municipalities or states, they're egregiously overburdened. So the fact that this is under 40 pages is fantastic.
Yes, it needed to be usable.
Yeah. I'm I'm curious, when we're talking about this being a community plan, what is what is the next steps in terms of outreach? I know you said that there'd be committee meetings. So what does that look like in terms of being available to the community?
Yeah, we are working on how we're going to outreach to people because it is difficult and they really need to know how to take care of themselves. We've met with Askex Humboldt on how we can make some commercials and do radio shows, how we can incorporate them training. We would love for them to have emergency plans. It's just how to get buy in. Yes. So we that's hoping this committee could come together because it'll have community services. They'll have they'll have ideas on how we can reach out to the community to get them involved and educated.
Do we have anyone from the council, Mayor, included on that committee? Or is that a role reserved for you? I'm just curious if that was.
We haven't. Nope. We just want to start that because we know we need to start preparing everyone. So if a member would like to be present, I'm sure that's possible.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say, I think it'll be a lot. It'll be much. It'll be really important to do that when we get into the annexes. So when we have specific responses to tsunamis or specific responses to large earthquakes or specific responses to fire, whatever it may be, that each one of those should have their outreach for people so they know what to do in those different situations.
And we've started in our own facilities. If you fill out an application, there's it shows you're in the tsunami zone, you're having an event in the tsunami zone, like here's the evacuation route. So we have started giving those and handing those out for our own facilities. It's just how to get the private side to do that as well. How do we get the hotels to do that? How do you get, you know, Old Town to do that? So we're trying to lead putting all those maps up in our building windows. Everybody sees them. It's just getting getting it there.
Councilmember Castellano?
Sorry, just one more idea. It's very hyper specific. There's a theater group that's composed of people with disabilities that create advocacy based theater for other people with disabilities called Tabuti Theater. And they're they they do a lot of performances in the community and they're kind of working on their next production. But I could imagine they could be a good partner in terms of working. A lot of the members are leaders in the community, in the disability advocacy community. So just anyway, super hyper specific, but.
Do they perform in the tsunami zone? Do they perform in the tsunami zone?
Uh, they work in art studios.
They could help spread the word.
They, I mean, they, many of them work in art spaces in the tsunami zone, so they're there almost every day.
Day. Okay. Anything further? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we will open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public in chambers that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so we will bring it back to council for a motion and a second. Councilmember Molton?
I'd like to move staff recommendation and adopt this plan.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. If there are no further comments, please vote. If there are further comments, raise your hand. Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And this will bring us to item I two, Bill number 1048, C S designation of local fire hazard severity zones with Chief Citro. Hello?
Good evening, council, mayor. Nice to be here today, tonight, actually. So today we're going to talk about fire hazard severity zones and the local responsibility areas. So you're going to get a little bit of a, a presentation from me to explain it and basically what it means. Um, so the first thing we need to discern is what is the state responsibility area versus the local responsibility area? What the state responsibility areas, it's a legal term defining the area where the state has financial responsibility for wildland fire protection and prevention only. Incorporated cities and federal, federal ownership are not included. Uh, in other words, the state responsibility areas for wildland fire protection fall under the iris of CAL FIRE, period. Um, they are financially responsible for um, wildland fire suppression of what they determine to be the state responsibility areas. Those are determined by the California Board of Forestry and CAL FIRE on an annual basis and updated every five years. A local responsibility area includes incorporated cities, urban regions, agricultural lands, and portions of the desert where the local government is responsible for wildfire protection. This is typically provided by city fire departments, fire protection districts, counties, and/or by CAL FIRE under contract. The entirety of the city of Eureka and the city limits falls within the local responsibility area. So therefore Humboldt Bay Fire is responsible for wildland fire suppression within the city limits of Eureka. So what is a fire hazard severity zone? So the state fire marshal, um, according to government code 51178, shall identify areas in the state as moderate, high, and very high hazard severity zones based on consistent statewide criteria and the severity of the fire hazard is expected to prevail in those areas. A moderate, high, and very high fire hazard severity zone shall be based on fuel loading, slope, fire weather, and other relative factors, including areas where winds have been identified by the office of the state fire marshal as a major cause of wildfire spread. These maps have been around for a very long time in regards to the state responsibility area. Um, and they've never really ventured into the local responsibility area in any way under any requirement under the government code. So when did it begin in the local responsibility area? Well, after the Oakland Hills Fire in 1992, uh, there was a bill passed uh, that called for CAL FIRE to evaluate fire hazard severity zones in local responsibility areas because the Oakland Hills Fire occurred in a local responsibility area. And to make a recommendation to lower, to local jurisdictions that were only in very high fire hazard severity zones. So in other words, the CAL FIRE in the state did maps for the local uh, responsibility areas back in 1992. But it only affected local jurisdictions that had very high fire hazard severity zones, and it was just recommendations. It was nothing more than that. In regards to building codes, defensible space, wildfire prevention programs, things like that. It was just a straight-up recommendation. So the hazard maps uh, are being updated to more accurately reflect the zones in California that are susceptible to wildfire. Uh, the hazard mapping process will incorporate new science and local climate data and improve fire assessment modeling and determining hazard ratings. So there's been a lot of improvements in this. And also due to the severity of some of the larger campaign wildfires that have occurred in California over the last 15 years. Um, the legislature now requires the adoption of all three fire hazard severity zone classes in the local responsibility area. Previously, like I stated before, only very higher, very high fire hazard severity zones were required for adoption in the local responsibility area. And that's under California Government Code 51175. So what do they actually measure? I don't want to get technical, and I had to read this a few times too. They evaluate hazard, not risk. So basically the hazard is based on physical conditions that create expected fire behavior over a 50-year period without considering short-term modifications. So in other words, if nothing changed over the next 50 years, what's the hazard that we're going to have a major wildfire within the city limits of Eureka? Okay? The entirety of the city limits of Eureka is mapped at the moderate fire hazard severity zone, which is the lowest hazard or none. Okay? Uh, there are no areas in the city limits of Eureka or within the Humboldt Fire District Number One which surrounds the city of Eureka mapped as high or very high. What that basically means is we have little to no hazard based off of these maps of a severe wildfire in the city limits of Eureka. So why are they being updated? Again, these maps are being updated to more accurately reflect the zones in California that are susceptible to wildfires. And the reasons is Paradise, Santa Rosa, Redding. Um, just because they're incorporated cities, they were technically in the local responsibility area, but they still had a high fire risk. So they've been remapped and zoned into these now. Um, with the new law that all the local jurisdictions have to adopt these maps, even if they are in the local responsibility area. They have to meet the same standards now as you do if you're in the state responsibility area. But if you're moderate or none, like we are, we don't have to worry about any of that because we're not in high or very high. So how are they determined? Um, short answer, they, they apply the state responsibility area standards to the local responsibility area standards. And then they talk about flame and ember intrusion from adjacent wildlands from flammable vegetation into an urban area under a wind-driven event. Fortunately for us, our vegetation here is uh, not light, it's not flashy, it's heavy, it's redwoods, it's wet. Um, we just don't have it here. So um, that's a good fortunate thing for us when it comes to um, our wildfire risk. The big question, everybody asked, and um, I've got a lot on this, is will this new severity zone map affect my ability to get or maintain insurance? Big question. This is the verbiage that came from the um, Insurance Commissioner's Office in California when these maps came out. Basically stating, the insurance companies use risk models which differ from our models, and they use things that are way more advanced than what we use to determine whether or not we're going to provide you with insurance or not. In other words, they're way ahead of where um, these basic uh, fire hazard uh, severity zone maps are. Um, I will say this, that I attended the uh, Northern California Disaster Conference um, last month, and it focused a lot on recovery um, from local events. And there was a spokesperson there from the United Policyholders Group, which is a nonprofit that represents insurance policyholders. And this question came up, and she basically stated the same thing as an advocacy group that the insurance companies are way beyond this. They're using other things. They're looking more specifically at targeted homes, building construction, all kinds of things like that. Whether or not they're going to write policies or not, or continue to provide the insurance. So the overall answer is, is no, they don't, but um, there's a chance they could. But because we're at a moderate to none, uh, that, that's really not going to affect insurance rates within the city or the ability for um, uh, people to maintain or keep their insurance. So where are these maps? So uh, we have to maintain them um, on our website. So uh, it's uh, HBfire.org and then the local responsibility area link there. On the city of Eureka's webpage, when you click on Humboldt Bay Fire is a link, it'll bring you to this. So you can get it there. It's also on the state's website. And then also we have hard copies down at Fire Station One in case somebody wants to see them because we have, they have to be publicly available and viewable um, by the local jurisdiction. You may also ask, why isn't Humboldt Bay Fire the J P A board adopting this? Um, the law is specific that the agencies having jurisdiction have to adopt this. So the city of Eureka has to adopt this, even though you um, uh, contract with the J P A to provide fire protection, the Humboldt Fire District One will also have to adopt this on their own too. The J P A can't do it because we aren't the agency having jurisdiction. This is the map itself. It was attached with your agenda summary. As you can see, uh, the gray area is no hazard whatsoever. So a majority of the city limits is, is, has no hazard. Uh, the south end of the city limits has a moderate hazard, um, the Lumbar Hills area and just the southern border of the city limits. Then also the very northeast corner out by Indianola and that area, just based on the light vegetation type. Uh, but if you know Lumbar Hills, it's a very lush, green, heavily forested area. That's why it's considered moderate, which is the lowest setting that they have other than none. Okay? All right. So the recommendation is to wave full reading and introduce Bill number 1048, uh, an ordinance approving the local fire hazard, the local responsibility area fire hazard zones severity map as provided by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection, otherwise known as CAL FIRE. Any questions?
Any questions? Councilmember Fernandez?
I'm grateful for, for the report and this uh, this ordinance. I, I think what's, I'm, I'm curious what you incorporate, what new science there is. It's a very odd phrase and.
I couldn't tell you. I do know that um, they do use new climate modeling. They use, they use also um, uh, fire history of the last 50 years. And I think the reason why the city of Eureka is so low is because we don't have any fire history of the last 50 years of a major wildfire. Um, those types of things, um, again, the vegetation types, um, the fuel loading, all those types of things. Uh, like I said, the chance that we're going to get blowing embers from a major wind-driven fire of light flashy fuels is just not realistic here within the city of Eureka along the coast. So that's why we're moderate.
Yeah, I think you answered it at the beginning. We're looking at models. We haven't developed a new science. We haven't created exo-fire science. So I was just curious where we were. So thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions? Seeing no one, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to speak on this item? And seeing no one. Do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
So we will bring, bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember Molton?
Uh, can you bring the motion back up? Or, nope, there he goes. Yeah, it's not you. If you let him. Oh, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to move that we uh, wave full reading and introduce Bill number 1048 dash C S, an ordinance approving the local responsibility area fire hazard severity zone maps as provided by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to take a six-minute break. Potentially seven. Next item is Bill number 1051 C S Tobacco Retailer Licensing Ordinance with City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This is the second reading of the Tobacco Retailer Licensing Ordinance. So we're recommending adoption of this. Um, I just have to go, I'm just going to go over the changes that were requested and what was made after council had provided direction on the changes. Um, there were three areas that were requested to be changed as a part of the um, um, recommendation last meeting. One was to add a definition for community centers. And then to have that community center be added to a section so that um, no new businesses can be within 600 feet of those community centers. And then the third change was to make it so that no new licenses are allowed within a quarter mile of existing um, license holders. So as it relates to the community center definition, we did add a community center definition. The community center means the following kinds of facilities and associated uses. Childcare center, religious institution, social services, or philanthropic, philanthropic facility, or residential care facility, and community gathering facilities, which may include, but are not limited to, a theater, auditorium, performance and meeting space, classrooms, art activities, including but not limited to, dance and music studios, health club, fitness centers, and related uses, gymnasium, pools, spas, and other uses incident there too. Social services, youth and day camp, teen programs, art activities, nighttime entertainment, onsite catering, childcare, retail, rooftop recreation, recreation, including but not limited to, basketball courts, play structures, and other related uses, contemplated and rooftop gardens. So basically a community center is anything but a tobacco retailer. Just joking. So that's the definition for the community center. And then the other two changes were made under sections 123, four, excuse me, 123 dot five, section B. And that's where it previously had just limited um, any new um, tobacco sales within 600 feet of a school. We added community center to that section. So we said no new tobacco retailer license may be issued to authorize the sale of tobacco products within 600 feet of any school or community center. And then as it relates to the quarter mile, um, we added in that same sections, one of 23 dash five, section B. No new tobacco retailer license may be issued to authorize the sale of tobacco products within one quarter mile of an existing tobacco retailer. So on the screen here, we have the 31 existing tobacco retailers and the blue circles around them are the radius within a quarter mile of each one of those. So if you look at it, 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 it very much is a deterrent to having new tobacco retailer licenses. The majority of the areas um, that would still be available are in residential areas for the most part. Um, so it would, if the intent of council is to limit any new tobacco retailers, this would do a very good job of that. Um, so those were the changes that were made. And if there's any questions, I'm available for comments. I mean.
Councilmember Contreras Deloche?
This isn't necessarily an important question, but I, uh, on the list of like community, what are we, community centers, is that what we're calling it? Or community? Yeah? Um, does that include clubs?
This, this map here are all the tobacco retailer licenses. So Woodley Island is actually considered that because I believe they sell cigars um, in their gift shop.
Ingamar Club?
Ingamar Club sells cigars. And there, yep. So anybody who sells a tobacco product currently is listed as that. So that includes facilities such as those, it includes gas stations, um, markets that sell cigarettes, all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
I'm, I'm just kind of mulling, mulling it over right now. Um, I know we had discussed uh, transferable licenses last time. I was curious how that, how this, along with the community centers and the uh, the distance impact that if at all.
So I, 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 City Attorney Black is on here, but my presumption would be that that would be considered a new. Uh, I, I think Attorney Black would be best to answer that. What you're asking is basically if um, a license was to potentially change, and it happens to be within that 600 feet of either a school or a community center, would it still be able to be permitted?
Correct. Thank you.
Attorney Black, would that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm sorry, I, I'm trying to, uh, turn on my video, but I can't seem to, uh, find that. So, I'll just, uh, address the councilman's question. Um, the, none of the changes that we have made, uh, directly affect transferability. Uh, what they've, what they've done is they've added a new category of grandfathered uses, uh, which would be those uses within a quarter mile of a, of another existing, uh, tobacco retailer. And those are permitted to be transferred under subdivision 155-dot-424-dot-060 of the Eureka zoning code. And that's mentioned in the last line of section 123-dash-five. So, um, the transferability, uh, I think has been addressed, uh, in terms of the people that, uh, have raised it and in terms of the people that are likely to confront that as an issue, which is almost everybody now selling tobacco, uh, if they confront that as an issue when they want to go to sell their, sell their, uh, current business. We did add the concept, uh, of a, uh, effectively, uh, conditional ordinance that a person can apply for, uh, prior to actually buying a store so that they can tell whether they're going to be licensed when they do conclude the purchase and they're not just taking a total risk. So, yeah, I think we've, I think we addressed the concerns that were raised by members of the public.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
What is red cherry glass? Is that a smoke shop?
I would assume, um, I know it's not been around for a very long time.
I'm just curious.
Where do you see that at?
Underneath Eureka Chevron by Winco.
Oh.
Oh, that's the still.
Oh, I didn't see still. Okay, never mind. Yeah, never mind. Okay, are there any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Oh, Mario, do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm, I'm curious. Going back to the concept then of transferring, would it be, would it be possible or allowable to, to put a sunset, uh, sunset date on when those transfers would be allowed?
Once again, I think, I, I believe if council chose to do that, it would likely take, and I think it would be Attorney Black to see whether that's considered substantive. But if that was something that was to change in this, it would at a minimum take another reading or potentially another introduction and adoption, depending on if Attorney Black considers it to be substantive. But nothing prohibits council from coming back at a later date and amending, um, the ordinance.
Anything further? Okay, seeing no further questions, we'll open this item up to public, public comment. Is there anyone in chambers that would like to speak on this item? Welcome.
My father began smoking cigarettes around 1966. He was eight years old. He continued to smoke for the next five decades. Several years ago, breathing became very difficult for him and he was shortly afterwards diagnosed with what is called chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, or COPD. This happened around the same time as the birth of my niece, his granddaughter, followed soon after by the birth of my nephew, his grandson. My niece turned six in just a couple of weeks and my nephew will be four early of next year. It was clear to everyone that him finally quitting tobacco cold turkey was entirely due to the fear that his COPD would prevent him from seeing his grandchildren grow up to at least a point where they will remember him after he's gone. Through sheer force of will and a return to his old, shockingly strenuous fitness routine, my father somehow fought back against his COPD and for a long while was able to move and run and even box like he used to. His doctors, doctors had never seen anything like it. He had the occasional flare-up, but by and large, it was usually impossible to tell that he had any lung issues at all unless he knew what to look for. His grandchildren live just next door to him, a constant reminder to not smoke even when his lungs feel fine. Yesterday, my dad was diagnosed with small cell carcinoma, a very aggressive form of lung cancer. Less than, um, 5% of persons with this diagnosis survive more than five years and the one-year survival rate is less than 50%. There are still more tests to be done, but at this point, especially considering the COPD, I would be surprised to see him survive to see Thanksgiving of next year. He will not see his grandson's first day of school. He will not see his granddaughter enter the first grade. His grandson will not remember him. His granddaughter might. I'm getting married next year and I don't know if he's going to be there to see it. I encourage you, Mayor and Council, to do whatever you can legally do under state and federal law to help stop the use of tobacco by young people, whether they're age 20 or 17 or eight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to speak? Anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
So, we'll bring it back to council for, Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, I'll move that we wa, wave full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1051-CS, adding chapter 123, sections 123-dash-one through 123-dash-one-four to title 11 of the Eureka Municipal Code, Tobacco Retailer Licensing, regulating tobacco product sales and requiring licensing of tobacco retailers.
Second. Motion in a second. If there are no further comments, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to Sales of Nitrous Oxide Ordinance with City Manager's Latery.
Thanks again, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this item, similar to the previous, is the second reading of the Nitrous Oxide Ordinance. Um, I made a typo, I apologize, in the recommendation, and it says introduce bill number. That needs to be changed to adopt because we are asking council to adopt this ordinance. Um, similar to the previous ordinance, there was a change. In this instance, it was just one change that was requested of the, um, nitrous ordinance, and that was to allow for another exemption, um, along with the exemption related to medical uses. Um, so, we added, uh, City Attorney Black and Deputy City Attorney Holt added a section under exceptions, uh, a number four, prior to number, the current number four. And it says this section does not apply to, and this is related to an exemption for restaurants. And it says this section does not apply to the sale or distribution of nitrous oxide by a wholesale distributor of food supplies directly to the location of a food preparation facility located in the city of Eureka, provided that the transaction is documented by a manifest stating the date, time, quantity, and type of nitrous oxide product delivered and certified by the food preparation facility, individual in charge, on-site, that the product has been received by that facility solely for the purpose of food preparation. Each manifest must be retained by the food preparation facility and the wholesale distributor and is subject to inspection by the city for a period of three years from the date of transaction. Other than that, the remainder of the ordinance is same as it was when it was introduced and staff is available for any questions.
Seeing none, we'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone here in chambers that would like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it over. Is there anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so, we'll bring it back to council for a motion. Councilmember, um, Fernandez?
Uh, I'll move that we wa, wave full reading, read by title only, and adopt bill number 1050-CS, adding section 130-point-one-five to title 13, chapter 130, making it unlawful for any person in the city with exceptions to sell or attempt to sell, offer, distribute, or provide nitrous oxide to any person.
Second. Okay, so, we have a motion in two seconds. Are there any comments? Councilmember Bauer? No? Okay. Councilmember Conchaire Stilich?
Just a quick comment. Um, these two back-to-back things, I just think we're doing something really good. So, um, I, we have an opportunity to make things a little bit safer for kids and their families, and I think that's what we're trying to do and I'm grateful.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we'll vote. Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Future agenda items. Councilmember Castellano?
Thank you. Um, let's see, two, well, I guess three, three items. I'm, I'm imagining other councilmembers may have this on their mind. Um, let's see, the first one is, I think we've all been involved with various conversations in the community regarding, um, the loss of SNAP benefits. And I know that we have, uh, funds left from the participatory budgeting or funds remaining. I would like to, uh, bring back to council to designate this and match it, uh, basically to, to potentially fund Food for People and St. Vincent de Paul. Um, yeah.
Can I not just, probably, can I ask how much money we're talking about?
There's 15,000 remaining.
There's, so, 15,000 and then match it?
In the participatory budgeting.
And then match that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make an informed, informed vote.
One million dollars.
So, it looks like you have general consensus on that one.
Um, and then the second one is, um, I want to say, last meeting, there was, uh, an interest in bringing the digital signs back and, uh, with some, and I didn't totally understand the request, and so, I, I just want to own that. I thought that, anyway. Um, but after some research, there's some challenges with anything in the coastal zone. And so, I would actually like to wait, uh, to bring that back, um, until there's just, uh, greater clarity around the Coastal Commission, um, and decisions around digital signs, just because I think it would potentially put a lot of burden on staff and create confusion in the community.
So, to clarify, you're rescinding last time.
Yeah, and so, I guess I'm wondering if other councilmembers are interested in, in a waiting.
Councilmember Molton?
Can you elaborate on the conflict or on the, like?
You said digital signs are likely not allowed in the coastal zone.
Um, so, outside of the sign ordinance that this body passed, there's the, the coastal zone itself has prevention for digital signs.
Yeah.
As part of that. Uh, so, what do you?
Basically, I guess regardless of that, I just think I, I don't want to bring back the digital signs, uh, currently.
Oh, I still do.
So, do we have a thumbs up or thumbs down to support Councilmember Castellano's? So, you've got two thumbs down and one, two, three thumbs up. So, it looks like it pass, it moves forward. Is that, or do you have to have?
To not bring it back. Yeah.
To not bring it back.
No, no, no. Council, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yes, excuse me, I'm sorry. I was looking at Councilmember Molton. To not bring it back. So, we've got one, two, three votes.
There's not consensus, there is a majority.
Majority.
Yeah.
That's why I'm curious, do we need a consensus or majority? And what would those numbers look like?
Um, and then the third one.
Hold on just a second. Excuse me.
So, I, I don't know a definition of consensus, but it's typically a majority when something is brought up for future agenda items, whether it's a 3-2, a 4-1, or?
Thank you for that.
I would think.
Correct. Correct. The history of us bringing back items has been when there is not full consensus, like, uh, five yes, then we do it by straw vote, basically, which is, in this case, is 3-2. Thank you. So, we will not be bringing it back. That was what was asked, yes. Thank you. Okay. Councilmember Castellano?
And then the third one is just the, um, I appreciate members of the public being forward together the resolution, uh, for the Sanctuary City for Transgender People and Gender-Affirming Healthcare and be interested in, uh, hearing, hearing that.
Five yes votes?
Just, just for clarity, would there be a particular date? Because we're coming up on the trans week or trans day of remembrance, too, towards the end of the month.
Okay, wait, next, I mean.
I, I think from a staff perspective, it may take a little bit more time.
Okay.
To research that and bring back pertinent information for you guys. Um, I mean, we could try and get just a report on it on the 14th. I don't know if we'll have an actual resolution.
I, I mean, I think if it takes more time.
Okay.
It, it's better to take the time and do it.
It was a general curiosity, not, not a mandate.
I didn't have it, yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Any further future? Councilmember Molton?
Uh, you want to go first? Okay. Um, I wrote this ask down so I could say this correctly.
Excuse me, we're just clarifying something.
Okay. Uh, I was taught that if you borrow a tool three times, you need to get your own. And EPD has been utilizing the search and communication capabilities of the sheriff office's drone pretty much since it's been available, including the dramatic, uh, rescue last week. I know they have because since 2023, they've had to report every single use of things like drones on an annual report to council. These reports are published on the EPD Transparency Portal. You can find them at eureka.ca.gov. Um, because I have received these reports and revisited all of these reports recently, I would like to discuss allowing EPD to research what a drone for EPD would look like so that they can then, in a subsequent process, bring the proposal back to council for a robust and transparent public process.
I can't vote.
But you mentioned two things. Are we only talking about the research portion?
Yeah, because drones are on the, the heightened scrutiny list, they have to ask permission to even look up what a drone costs. So, I would like to give them that opportunity. Clearly, they've made, uh, use of a drone and that use is really well-recorded. Um, and I think they had, should have the opportunity to ask us for permission to ask us for permission.
You can't vote, Kim.
I know I can't vote. I'm still voting.
I'm parsing that because it's just asking for permission to do research. That's what I'm trying to get clarity on.
That's all, yeah. That's, that's the only thing we can do at this step is, um, give EPD permission to research drones, talk, and then come to council with information about what a drone might look like, what it might cost, what they would want to do with it, what policies around it might look like. Then we can have an informed discussion past then. But right now, first, they have to come to us and ask permission to even do the research part, even come up with information to answer questions that we might have about drones that they might want. And given the history of their use of drones, I think just putting on the agenda to allow them to ask permission and have that conversation so they can go off and find more information about drones and bring it back, should we allow them to at that point, then they can come back with information and we could have that discussion. But the first step is can EPD ask us permission to, uh, research what and how they might use a drone?
I mean, I, I think you could skip that step and just.
Yeah, so, that's what I was going to say, so.
Give them permission to research.
Yeah.
But we can't make that decision off of an agenda. We'd have to put that, that's the question that has to go on.
I think that, and city, Assistant City Manager and City Clerk, I'll correct me if I'm wrong, the ordinance does say without council direction, we can't basically go and research funding or anything like that related to it. Would future agenda items? Would a future agenda item that achieves, um, a majority or a consensus, would that constitute our, the EPD's ability to go do the research, or would we need to bring back an agenda item and have them make an official?
I would need to research that ordinance and perhaps Attorney Black can give guidance. Um, I'm, are you asking to just put on a future agenda, the request that was ta- uh, taken off the agenda at the last meeting?
Yes. And given that that was on the consent calendar, because there wasn't information to have a conversation with yet, um, people took issue with it being on consent, um, that I feel like this need that, even that part of it, even just the ask, even without having any information to have a discussion about an actual drone program or an actual drone, even that needs to be out and, and in public and, and on an agenda, and that's what I would like to put on an agenda.
Okay, so you're just asking to bring back that same agenda, basically? And so once again, with that in mind, I want to let the public know and council know that when it comes back, it'll be with that request and that there won't be a lot of answers to a lot of the questions that people are going to have.
I, I can appreciate that, and this is the situation we're in.
Uh, Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yeah, the, just to clarify, is the reason, the, if I understand, the reason why they need to request permission to even start re-doing research is because it's military, it's considered military supplies?
It's listed, when we had to do in 2024, January, we passed a military equipment ordinance. There's a list of military equipment that the state puts out, and then we generated our own list of what we use. And drones are considered to be a piece of equipment under that military equipment ordinance.
But it doesn't mean they're like military grade, or it's like, it just, it just, that's the name of the list. And so because it's on that list, it has these heightened, um, requirements for scrutiny and for reporting, and one of those is that they can't even research it without us allowing them to research it.
Yeah, um, i-if we go forward with that tonight, I would, I'd like to attach a request to that, that as part of that re-research that EPD would do, it would also include why it's necessary for them to have one separate from this sort of, uh, crisis response team that's sharing the sheriff's departments and stuff at the moment.
Yeah, and so under that.
We might be getting into the territory of the conversation I'm asking that we have.
Sorry, never mind.
Because they would just be coming to us for a request to research.
I got it. Then just forget what I just said. Okay, never mind, delete.
Okay, so do we have consensus or do we not? Thumbs up or down? Good. I mean, not good. Thank you. Excuse me.
Neutral response.
Uh, yeah, it is a natural response. Anything further? Yours is a proclamation, correct? Uh, Councilmember Contreras Deluge?
Yeah, November is Native American Heritage Month, and I was wondering if we could do some sort of proclamation, something?
I'm sorry.
Councilmember Fernandez talks too much in class. Uh-huh. Um, November is Native American Heritage Month, and I was wondering if we could do some sort of proclamation.
So yes. That would be something you could just ask me. Yes. Okay. Yeah. All right. Anything further? Any further agenda? Future agenda items? All right, this brings us to City Manager Report.
Thank you, Mayor, and a good evening again, Mayor and Council. Um, I do have Chief Stevens here to do a report on the statistics for the third quarter of 2025, but prior to that, I know there's been a lot of discussion about some of the issues surrounding food security and the uncertainties and what's going on, and I just wanted to give a brief, um, update. There will be an announcement, um, tomorrow about the date and location for, um, uh, a, a food, uh, event, a drive-through food event that'll be held somewhere here locally. We have offered up our participation with, um, our Upland staff to go help out with that event. Um, the Food for People is also, um, increased the frequency of their food boxes. They typically only do it once a month. They are now doing out of the back of the food pantry on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, um, for folks, so they can show up and get a emergency food box from, um, Food for People at their Fourteenth Street location. We're also talking to Food for People to partner with them on a walk-up, um, event at the municipal auditorium, and we'll have more information on that coming up soon. And then, um, as stated before, um, St. Vincent de Paul's is in need of, um, uh, more volunteers and any sort of donations would help, um, for them to, um, do more, uh, meals per day than they're currently doing now. So, and I think Councilmember Castellano, that could lead to something if council approves something at the next meeting. Um, so with that, um, we'll bring up Chief Stevens to give the staffing and statistics report from the third quarter.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, just last week presented these numbers to our COP board as part of our quarterly report to them in our meeting, so I wanted to share the same staffing and, uh, stats with you all this evening. We'll start with our third quarter stats, and this time we've done for year-to-date as well comparisons. I will apologize, the numbers are slightly off on our dispatch stuff. The company that does our, the number of calls, it just logs the number of calls that comes in, had a server failure, so we're missing a whole month of data. But with what we do have, uh, we can see a decrease in the calls coming in from a nine-one-ones to our comm- communication centers, down nineteen percent this quarter. And then our non-emergency calls are down about six percent. So those numbers are probably slightly skewed, just we don't have all the numbers, but we'll have them next quarter for sure. Our calls for service overall for field activity is down nine percent for this quarter and six percent for the year. That correlates to the number of calls we're seeing coming into our dispatch center. However, our also initiated activity is up a hundred and one percent this quarter, eighty-one percent for the year. Our traffic stops are up two hundred and fifty-seven percent for this quarter and two hundred and twenty-eight percent for the year. And then our bike and pet stops is up three hundred and fifteen percent and four hundred and eighty-two percent respectfully. This goes just to the change in the mission within the department to become proactive in our policing efforts, taking approach, utilizing traffic enforcement to also root out crime and other issues within the city that often use that as a mode of transportation, but also to increase the overall commuting safety of our city. Commander LaFrance loves graphs, so he threw me in some graphs this time to help, uh, illuminate these things, and he's watching from home. That's why I'm giving him a little bit of props. So, uh, 2025, you'll see the calls for services, the dark yellow line at the bottom, and how that correlates to the last three years from twenty-two to twenty-four. You can kind of see trends throughout that time period, uh, by month, and, and those are consistent pretty much throughout those last four years. Our also initiate activity, you can see that line now is at the top. Those numbers have increased. Same with our traffic stops. So cases and arrests, our total cases for the year so far are twelve hundred and eighty-eight, and that's down slightly from, uh, two-twenty-twenty-four, by eight percent for this quarter, one percent for the entire year. However, our felony arrests are up twenty percent for the quarter and twelve percent for the year. And our misdemeanor arrests are up two percent and one percent. Again, this just goes to the proactive approach. Tomorrow, we're out there contacting people for traffic violations, uh, being out in the field, we're able to identify crimes, identify more suspects, warn suspects, and take people off the street. Our collisions are down thirty-three percent for the quarter, seventeen percent for the year. It's a direct correlation, I believe, to a lot of the proactive traffic enforcement that's taking place and just the, uh, visibility of the officers out there on the streets and it's having a definite impact in this, uh, area. However, our criminal collisions are up, uh, fifty-four percent and forty percent for the year, and I'll explain a little bit about that in a second. Our DUI arrests are up fifty to fifty-six this quarter, so seventy percent for the quarter and seventy-six percent for the year. And our citations are up a hundred and sixteen percent, a hundred and two percent. So you can see we write it, do a lot more stops than we do citations. Citations are just another means to a deterrent and education, but there's a lot more we get out of just some of the communication we have and the interactions we have with commuting members of our public without having to write citations. We still get the same impact. So why are our criminal collisions up? Uh, we're seeing more impaired drivers. We've spent a lot of money and a lot of time sending our younger officers to field sobriety school trainings, uh, advanced trainings through our Office of the Traffic Safety Grant, and now the marijuana grant that we just obtained for enforcement. So we're better preparing our officers to be on the street and identify those objective signs, so when they're dealing with more collisions, they're finding those underlying issues of being under the influence of whether it's drugs or alcohol. We're also seeing more collisions with parked vehicles because of the DUIs, buildings, and property damage. And then we're seeing a lot of hit and runs, and those are economic factors that lead to some of those reasons why people won't stay and share information. It impacts your insurance rates. They may have no insurance at all, and then they're trying to avoid new laws relating to DUI charges. Uh, I can say this firsthand is happening because on, uh, New Year's, or not Year's, Halloween Day, I was pulling out, they're dropping off my dry cleaning. A car was coming at me at seventy miles an hour and tried to get away from me, failed miserably. But, uh, he was subsequently arrested for DUI, uh, out of state, unlicensed, no insurance, and he had hit a car in the parking lot of Pacific Outfitters and was fleeing from that car, and she was following him, and that's why he was running. So this is happening pretty regularly within our city, and it's for those types of factors right there that it's happening. Our mental health calls, uh, have gone up this quarter, um, and they're up overall for the year. Our fifty-one-fifty holds, our mental health holds have gone up slightly, and our diversion rate is holding pretty close to the same. When you look at a graph on why we've seen increase, we believe there's a lot of factors that go into this, but one part of it was that our mental health, uh, officer that we had working with our CSAT team took another deployment for two months, and during that two months, we were backfilling it with individuals that are trained in that, but not as skilled in that, and I think that had a direct impact for those two months, and those two months were in this quarter. That employee is now back with us, and we're back on the right track of getting people the help they need, uh, in our community. Our staffing, uh, so far, I feel like we're in a really good place. We just got one officer off of field training that graduated out of the last academy. The second officer is in their shadow weeks with our final two weeks of solo patrol with oversight from a field training officer, so they should be off shortly. We currently have three recruits in the police academy that are scheduled to graduate in December, and they're all doing very well. Uh, I have one recruit currently projected to go to the January Academy. We have two vacancies in our records division, but we have two people in backgrounds. We have two dispatchers in training currently, and that is, uh, completes our dispatch staffing for the first time since two thousand and eight. They're fully staffed. It may last, it may not, we'll see, but again, we're a long ways, uh, ahead of where we were several years ago, for sure. And then we have one vacancy in property. We have, uh, one individual in backgrounds for that position, and we're also putting a second in too for a part-time position that we have slotted for that, um, position, well, to work in property with our property clerk. Any questions on staffing or the stats for the third quarter from the Eureka Police Department?
I just want to say one thing, Chief, before we go to questions. I, I really want to commend EPD staff and EPD command staff, especially recognizing kind of the transition. I get a lot of phone calls about, you know, um, what we're doing engineering-wise related to our roads and bringing in bike and ped facilities and those type of things. I hadn't even had the discussion with the chief about this at all, but I get a lot of phone calls and seeing the bike and ped citations and that being monitored by EPD, I think it's really important, and I think the community really appreciates it.
Thank you, sir.
Questions? Councilmember Castellano then?
Thank you, and, uh, congratulations on the staffing. Um, it's really a testament to your leadership as well, so thank you for that. I had a question about the decrease in the number of calls and cases, but the increase in felony arrests. And I was curious if that is because there are more felonies or better detective work, so that you're able to kind of make those arrests? Or kind of, yeah, what's driving that variation there?
Yeah, we're not seeing a, a huge increase in felony crimes being committed, which would directly correlate to more arrests. I think what it is, is that we're seeing, uh, the officers being on the street, being on time to investigate the crimes they do get, but also, uh, the courts are prosecuting people and putting warrants out for folks, uh, whether it's in our community or someone else's community. And because we are out there making more contacts on the streets, the likelihood of us running into these individuals, why they still have active warrants is higher, and we're able to make those arrests and take them off, uh, and book them into the Hummel County Jail.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez?
Uh, thank you for the report, Chief. Uh, you touched on a number of things, and, and going back to the felony arrests, are you seeing a particular type? What do the trends look like when it comes to those, if there's been an increase?
Yeah, we haven't seen, I have no trends to report out for any types of felony crimes that are being committed. Like I said, I believe most of them will fall into the, the warrant arrests, so other people have done investigations on crimes, and we're just making that arrest and booking those individuals. But we are doing some really good police work, and our community, or, uh, Criminal Investigation Unit is really taking the lead on some really big cases, and we've been able to make some nice arrests in that realm as well, that leads to many years behind, you know, bars for sex offenders and other crimes like that, that we've gotten those reports forwarded to us through a multitude of different sources and had time to investigate.
And, and when we're looking at the pedestrian and bike stops, what do those look like? Because of course, when you're pulled over in a vehicle, we have an idea. What does it look like when it's a pedestrian or a cyclist?
It's exactly the same, pretty much. Bicycle is for sure. Cop car is going to see you commit a, a traffic violation and use lights to pull you over and have a conversation with you. Uh, pedestrians, it may or may not include the lights on top because a lot of times these things happen in front of us, and we can just make a contact off to the side of the street or on the sidewalk. Um, but it's pretty much the same thing. You're being detained for some type of traffic-related violation or street violation if you're a pedestrian.
And then the, the citations, where are we primarily seeing these? Is it one particular neighborhood? Is it all across town? What it?
Yeah, I think a lot of the focus right now has been on some of our major corridors. I know especially when schools started in August, and still to this day, uh, don't drive down I Street between seven and nine o'clock in the morning, going over more than thirty miles an hour, because you'll probably run into one of my officers. Uh, but they're looking at those major corridors and then evaluating, uh, you know, the speed relative to all the other conditions, whether the issue is a citation. It's up to the officer if they do or not. Um, but like, we've done a huge social media, and again, I'll send this out to Laura and our IPIO and to Commander LaFrance on, you know, slowing down in Eureka. They're actually sharing cases and, and citations and stops and, and actually arrests when somebody's driving two times the legal limit in the city on one of our roadways. You're going to go to jail for it for reckless driving. We're going to take your car, and you're going to have to fight to get it back. So, um, I think those kind of proactive measures we've taken, not only with the enforcement, but with the education piece and letting people know, I think it's truly having an impact. And they are concentrating on the, the larger corridors, the places we have the highest rates of traffic collision. So we're doing stats every month, both on the officer performance, uh, as well as our forensic analysts is doing stats on where's our highest collisions? What's the highest calls for service in those timeframes? Where are our hotspots when it comes to vehicle theft or thefts from a vehicle? And she's sharing that information each month, so that gives direction to the sergeants to be able to proactively inform their officers and, and do special projects, work certain neighborhoods to try to address certain types of crimes. So, um, when you see the decrease in the calls for service, you should see the increase in the proactivity. And I think they directly correlate to one another, and then that proactive enforcement allows us to do special projects. And it's not all traffic that they're doing out there. They're, they're concentrated on certain things that need to be addressed because we're seeing those in the stats that we are getting for some of the crimes that are being reported.
And I've been appreciative of the social media campaign when it's, uh, you know, been a certain, what's been a type of citation or infraction where someone's been pulled over for speeding, because it's less focusing on the shame and just like, don't do this behavior. You don't need to be speeding, you know, fifty down I or H for that matter. And then you'd also touched on the diversion rate for the mental health program, or through the mental health calls. What, what type of diversion are we looking at here? What, what programs are we going through?
Sure, the diversion comes from our, uh, collaboration with CARE and our ability to, um, utilize the resources that are out there and knowing the clients that, and those on the street that the CSAT team, the CARE team are running into. A lot of these individuals have resources already out there. They have CTT or CCT workers and others who we can just make a phone call and refer them directly to that person to get them the assistance they need instead of taking them to the hospital. So the diversion rate is based on us not having to transport someone on an actual hold to St. to St. Joseph Hospital to start that seventy-two hour process. It's, we're utilizing the other resources out there. There are other resources that they may already have assigned to them to mitigate any incidence of crisis that we're exhibiting or, and you know, having interactions with them on that particular date and time.
So it's a more relational build at this point than, or establishing some, some continuity with them. It's not just, we're going to do a psych hold or it's
Correct. It's a conversation, it's the history that we have, whether it's through the care workers, or whether it's through us and knowing this, these individuals, and taking a more personal approach to their welfare and, and safety than just taking them to the hospital and dropping them off.
Sorry, city manager.
Well, that's what I was gonna say, and I apologize for interrupting you. It's not other resources, it's not just other resources, it's our resources too with the relationships, not not only CSAT and EPD have, but with our CARE team and being able to de-escalate and get people in a in a state where they are not needing to go to emergency room services or anything like
Right, and that's what I'm wanting to highlight is, you know, the work that the city has been doing with the police department and taking on the mental health aspect of, of, uh, of our community. And so, uh, you, my last piece, uh, you touched on staffing being in a good place, and just, just from the numbers alone, it looks pretty good. What, what would you attribute the, the retention rate to, given where we were years back?
Let me get there. Let me get there. Uh, a couple of things. I, one, I have to thank my staff, and, and thanks for the, you know, city manager and others for thanking me, but it's my staff that does this. They put together the recruitment teams, they put together um, all the packages, they go to these locations, they try to recruit people. Uh, our social media stuff we do to try to recruit, all that has played a role into us seeing an increase overall in all of our positions for the amount of applications we're getting. For our records position, we got more than fifty-five applications for those two positions, which is like the highest we've ever seen, and that's across the board for CSOs, police officers, record, uh, property techs. So the, I think the pendulum is swinging in the economic world where people are coming back to work, they want to get in the government work, and, and we're appreciative of that, and we're finding good people. When it comes to the retention, it definitely comes down to the city manager, the council, others that worked with uh the new contract and making sure that the officers are appropriately uh paid and have the benefits they need to want to stay here and feel like they're welcomed here and are appreciated here. Uh, I know that's playing a huge role in, in the people staying. And those that are leaving, I know I have an officer leaving for family reasons. I know that the two that went to Cal Poly, they were for personal reasons. They were not because of the city wasn't treating them well. They were not because the department had issues. It was because they were making life decisions based on their age, based on their future goals and where they wanted to be. So you can't, you know, God bless them, and, and we wish you the best of luck and, and take care of yourself, but um so, yeah, I think we're in a good place, and it's been this collaborative effort, I think, by everyone involved, from council all the way down to the recruiters that we have within the department.
And then, sorry, one last one. Can I? One, one last one, okay. Uh, just because it came to mind as you were talking about that, and I know we're not like other areas, you know, particularly the Bay Area where someone's coming from the Central Valley to come to work for three, four days and then drive back. That's not happening here. So, so I'm curious, like, of the folks that we've hired, wh-what does that retention rate look like when we're looking at locals that are from Humboldt joining EPD?
I would say it's probably close to seventy-five, eighty percent of the last, let's say, fifteen we've hired, maybe even more than that, that are local uh residents of Humboldt County. And our, our recruit program allows us to hire more local individuals that want to be involved in law enforcement because we actually give them a salary while they're going to the academy. They can take care of their families, their, you know, financial situation is not impacted such that they have to make their life decisions based on the next paycheck versus what their ultimate career goals are. So us being able to support them through that recruit program has been a huge benefit in us seeing, uh, being able to recruit people and then retain them because we build loyalty with the individuals we hire because we went out of our way to hire them as recruits and bring them into the family and make sure they're taken care of while they're going to the academy, and then they serve us in the community well.
Anything further? Thank you for all you do.
Thanks. I would like to thank Councilmember Moulton for bringing that item up and council for at least giving me the opportunity to do some research and bring you back some ideas and information, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, anything further? City Manager Slattery?
That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody, for staying. We appreciate you being here. Uh, we'll see you next time. This meeting's adjourned.